Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it is 5:30 and we are calling our meeting to order for the purpose of going into executive session. We will be going into executive session which is listed on our agenda on page five, item 10, and I'm going to read them in the order that we are going to do them. We are going to do item 10B, then 10A, then 10C, and then 10D. Item 10B is "City Council shall convene and declose the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 and 551.072 regarding real estate matters including possible exchange by sale of property and the abandonment of a right-of-way near downtown." I will be recusing myself on that item. The next item we will be covering is item 10A. "City Council shall convene and declose the executive session for a legal briefing by the city attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding Resolution Number 2019-102 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas involving an opportunity for settlement of a pending sanitation lane at 1900 Jasper Street." Item 10C, "City Council shall convene and declose the executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to confer with city attorney regarding the status of building Bastrop codes." And item 10D, "The City Council shall convene and declose the executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate and seek advice of its attorneys regarding the operation of Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District," at which time Mayor Pro Tim Nelson will be recusing himself. It is 5:31 and we are in executive session. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. It is 6:32 and I am calling this meeting to order as authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. This meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. Some of you may or may not realize that we were in executive session at 5:30, so we are out of executive session, we are back into regular session. We have a full dais, but we've been in meeting since 5:30, so you may see some of us run to the restroom real quick. Counsel, we are on item number 11. Take any necessary or appropriate actions on matters posted for consideration in the closed executive session, and I believe we have one matter. Item number 11 is taking necessary action. I'm looking for a motion on the item in the executive session. We've got to finish the executive session before we start the rest of the meeting. So I'm looking for a motion. If anybody has a motion, I need you to turn on your mic. Counselmember Jackson, if you're going to make a motion.
Okay, I'm not hearing that clearly, I'm sorry. For item 10A, I was going to move that we do take action on that item. I'd like to move to approve Resolution Number R-2019-102 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop.
I have a motion from Counselmember Jackson to approve Resolution 2019-102.
Second.
I have a second from Counselmember Ennis. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Counselmember Jackson?
Yes.
Counselmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Counselmember Rogers?
Yes.
Counselmember Peterson?
The motion passes unanimously. Resolution 2019-102 is approved. There are no actions to be taken on the remaining items, which puts us back to page one. And tonight, we have two young ladies with us. I am on item number two. Kaylee and Ava, if you guys will come forward, I'm going to talk about you and you're going to come right up here and turn around and face the audience, really face your parents so they can take a picture of you. That's what we're doing here. And they are in Bastrop Intermediate School Band, Band Rocks. How many people on council were in the band? I know me and Bill for sure. All right. One of them plays the clarinet. Raise your hand if you play the clarinet. One of them plays the flute. Raise your hand if you play. I played the flute and then I moved over to the ovo. Don't move over to the ovo, it's a hard instrument. So they are enjoying band and we are very appreciative of them coming tonight to say the pledge for us. And ladies and gentlemen, if you will please rise, these young ladies will lead us in the pledge. Hang on, hang on. Andy's going to take your picture and I'm going to get out of the way. Okay, and now we're moving on to item number three, and we are blessed tonight to have Deacon Corby Wise with us from Ascension Catholic Church. If you will remain standing, he will lead us in our invocation. Deacon Wise, I need you to stand in front of the mic so that they can hear you at home. They want to hear your prayer.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support during this meeting. Help all to engage in a meaningful discussion. Allow everyone to grow closer within this group so they can nurture the bonds of this community. Fill each and every one with your grace, Heavenly Father, as decisions are made that affect this wonderful city of Bastrop. And continue to remind us that all we do here in this evening, all that is accomplished is for the pursuit of truth for your great glory and for the service of humanity. We ask this through your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, you may, you can be seated. Thank you so much, Deacon Wise. Really appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we are moving on to the mayor's report. And before I get started on the mayor's report, I received a very nice handwritten letter, but it has, it was not signed, so there's no name or no phone number, so I cannot contact this person back. But on behalf of this person, I am asking everyone in Bastrop who owns a dog to please be a responsible dog owner. This person thinks that several folks who own dogs are not responsible dog owners. So I am on behalf of a person who I cannot name, asking you to please keep your dog on a leash, please pick up after your dog, and please don't let your dogs run wild. Otherwise, you will get a visit from our code enforcement officer in animal control. So that was a little public announcement. For those of you who think I fell off the face of the earth for a few days, I actually left Bastrop County with my husband September 11th, and we were gone for about four days. We went completely out of the state and it was awesome, but if I was gone and missed your event, please don't be offended. It was the first time we had left the county in almost a year, so we were trying to spend a little bit of time together. I also want to bring to your attention, I got a really cool flyer, and I will talk about it again at our next council meeting, but there is the Autumn Bird Set on October 12th at Fisherman's Park from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Sounds like it's going to be a really cool event, so I know how busy October gets and I wanted you to pencil that in for your save the date. Thank you, Colin, for the graphic. Moving on, between August 30th and September 10th, I attended the chamber luncheon, and this is Susanna Feather in Chairman Sirier's office, and one of the reasons I am very happy that she has gone to work for Chairman Sirier is that she used to work for Mayor Price. And Betsy Price is the mayor of Fort Worth, and that means that Ms. Feather has extensive experience with municipalities and with running cities and what it takes to run a city. And Chairman Sirier and I have not been on the same page on exactly how much the state should be involved in running a city, so I'm hoping that her perspective will be beneficial to those of us who live in cities. In the middle of the picture, I was really, it was very cool, I toured the new hospital with Congressman Cloud and Chairman Sirier. Beck is doing an outstanding job. Jerry Palady that's on city staff says things are going really well, and both Beck and Ascension were talking about some of the workforce development that they're doing. It's just a really cool site, so we're looking forward to November when they are open for business. I also attended the DDA reunion between DDA and Main Street, and I know I saw Counselmember Ennis, Counselwoman Rogers, Counselman Jackson, and myself. It was a great event, and I appreciate Rebecca and Debbie Denny pulling that together. It was a neat group of people and I think got some new energy going in that organization. If you go to the next slide, it was a busy week last week. We had three meetings last Thursday, very heavily attended was the Come and Go for the Residents on the B3 codes, and there'll be some more information about that coming out soon. Yes, we heard you, if you live on Main Street, yes, we are changing the zoning. And the wastewater treatment plant number three, there was an open house that was very well-attended and got a lot of questions answered and folks seemed to be happy about that. And congratulations to Chief Altfeld and Bastrop Long-Term Recovery Team and all of the folks. And I know I'm leaving some people out of the police department, the fire department, the burn house. There's a really neat event at the shelter on Saturday. September is preparedness month, so if you didn't make it out to the event, please make sure that your family's prepared in case of an emergency. If you go to the next slide, tomorrow night, we will be hosting Region 10 TML meeting, our quarterly meeting. It will be at the Opera House. Terry Lynn Moore will be singing the National Anthem, and Connor McInally will be putting on a part of the play that he did earlier in the year, the Texas Victory. Texas Victory or Die, I think it is. Texas Victory. Clearly, I don't remember the title of it, but it's Connor and it's going to be great. Next Tuesday is October 1st, National Night Out. We'll have a proclamation about that later, but please participate in National Night Out. And then we'll be back on the 8th for council, and we will have council, and then we will, as soon as council's over, council will be riding to San Antonio for the TML annual conference. And that is the end of my mayor's report. Keeping track of, making sure that I always ask someone different to go first, Counselmember Ennis, do you have anything to report tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to compliment the chief and all of his folks for the preparedness event on Saturday. I want to dovetail on to what the mayor said. It was an excellent, excellent event, and I learned a lot. I got busted out for not having fire alarms in my house, and so I immediately went out and bought some. So it was a great event. Thank you, sir. I attended the Historic Landmark Commission meeting about a week and a half ago and celebrated the retirement of some members and the appointment of new members and looking forward to working with them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Counselmember Ennis. Counselmember Jackson?
I'd just like to say ditto on that. The preparedness meeting on Saturday was very well organized and very informative, and I, that's basically it.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Counselmember Rogers?
Well, I wasn't able to go to your open house, but I do want to know that several people came in and told me that they were there and was totally impressed with you. Thank you for making everybody look great. I did go to a Main Street meeting looking forward to the Christmas, we're already gearing up for the big holiday and the homestour and all the great things that Rebecca's got planned, so look forward to that happening, and I think it's going to be exciting. Great.
Counselmember Peterson?
Thanks, Mayor. Nothing tonight.
All right, that concludes our council member report. City Manager?
Because I feel as bad as I sound, I have asked that to be my announcement.
All right.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, council members. Thank you. I'm actually really excited to give this report tonight. It's on behalf of the American Planning Association. We have an annual statewide conference in November, and as part of that conference, there are annual awards awarded throughout the state that recognize good planning work throughout, well, our state. And one of those is an Elected Official Award, and it's awarded to people who promote the work of elected officials in our state by recognizing exemplary work at that annual conference. So we put in a nomination for that award, and I'm happy to say that our very own mayor, Connie Schrader, has been chosen as the annual recipient of the 2019 Planning Advocate Award. So Mayor Schrader will be honored at an awards luncheon ceremony at our annual statewide planning conference in November in Waco. So we are thrilled, and it's just really a testament that the American Planning Association again is recognizing all the hard work that you all are championing here in Bastrop, and it's just really been an honor to be a part of it, so congratulations.
Thank you so much. That is such a surprise. I'm usually not that good at keeping secrets, so I'm, wow, what an honor. Thank you very, very much. All right, well, speaking of planning, we are moving on to item, to page two, item 4D, and I will be reading a proclamation because it turns out that October is National Community Planning Month. Whereas change is a constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. Whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America, whereas American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorsed National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment. Whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Bastrop. Whereas downtown Bastrop was designated by the Texas Chapter of the American Planning Association as a great Texas neighborhood as part of the great places in Texas in 2019. Now therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize the month of October as Community Planning Month. If you are involved in planning, if you are on the Planning and Zoning Commission or are you a part of the Planning Department, please come forward. We're going to give you some applause, and I'm going to give you this proclamation. Let's give them a round of applause. Don't make me call you by name. Come on up. Whereas the City of Bastrop is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Bastrop, whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. Whereas home fires killed 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, and fire departments in the United States responded to 352,000 home fires. Whereas the majority of U.S. fire deaths, four out of five, occur at home each year. Whereas, this was shocking to me, the fire death rate per 1,000 home fires reported to the U.S. Fire Department was 10% higher in 2016 than in 1980. And whereas Bastrop residents should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards. Whereas working smoke alarms, Counselmember Ennis, cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Bastrop's residents should install smoke alarms, I won't say his name again, in every sleeping room outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home. And whereas Bastrop residents should listen for the sound of the smoke alarm and when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately. Whereas Bastrop first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention, protection, and education. Now therefore, I, Connie B. Schrader, do hereby proclaim October 6th through October 12th as Fire Prevention Week. Let's give these gentlemen a round of applause. And now, all the police can come forward. Chief Nagy, that's you. Whereas National Night Out, and Tamara's not here, right? She's at school, okay. Whereas National Night Out is an annual community-building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live. And whereas National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement, whereas millions of neighbors take part in National Night Out across thousands of communities from all 50 states and U.S. territories. Whereas the City of Bastrop plays a vital role in assisting Bastrop Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the City of Bastrop by supporting National Night Out 2019 locally. And whereas National Night Out provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under positive circumstances. Now therefore, I, Connie B. Schrader, do hereby proclaim the evening of October 1st as National Night Out. Let's give these gentlemen a round of applause. Moving right along, we are technically at work sessions and briefings, but a very good friend of mine and a comrade in getting things done in Bastrop sat here for almost two hours to give her presentation the last time she was here. So we are going to move to 9K. Counsel, that is on page five, and we are on 9K. Sorry, Colin, I should have told you. Consider action to approve Visit Bastrop's 2020 Business Plan and Fiscal Year 20 Budget. Ms. Smith, if you want to come forward, we will hear your presentation and take a vote.
And before you get started, I think we should all recognize that today is your one-year anniversary. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's been a fun year.
My halftime flies when you're having fun.
I know, it's been a lot of fun. Okay, so by agreement with the city, we are to, Visit Bastrop is to present our business plan for the upcoming year along with our budget. So we will start in with our business plan. What I have done this particular year is I'm going to review the core pieces of our agreement that we have, because those core pieces are really not going to change year over year over year, part of the agreement unless the agreement itself changes. And then at the end of the presentation, so a lot of this is going to be reviewed for most of you, and then at the end of the presentation, I'll show you the new things that we have planned on top of what we've already been discussing. Also, when we rolled out this business plan, it was rolled out in January because I had just started in September, and the council was very dear and let me have some time to get this going. So this will be a bit of an extension of last year's as well. So just, whoops, oh, here we go again. Sorry.
So if you're at home, we're on page 1,172 of the packet.
Okay, so our mission and our vision remains the same. It's what drives us, and we will continue to be the leading destination authority and resource to support the City of Bastrop and the community and the people who make it work every day. Visit Bastrop Business Plan, I just mentioned this, marks the second year of our three-year strategy, and it's, we're concurrently developing builds and building upon our success of 2018 and 19. The board's strategies don't deviate from any of the primary objectives and strategies which we identified as core strategies and metrics. We continue to serve as an economic engine. We deliver performance of economic development benefits, and we aim to be the recognized leader in the community for effective tourism development. Our objectives remaining the same is to establish Bastrop as a preferred location for leisure meetings and events and business travel, and increase visitor spending in our target markets, which are listed there. We have our 12 target markets. Our marketing, public relations, and plan methodology is, we developed our brand in January. We're carrying that forward into fiscal year 19 and 20. This brand will probably stay with us for at least two to three years. We have the voice and the tone, the brand pillars, the brand positioning, and the brand We developed our creative strategy in, we rolled it all out in March, I believe it was, and that was wildly successful, so we're going to continue that campaign, which is centered around the robust Welcome to It All campaign, positioning us as a top location for both leisure and business travel and for unique amenities and experiences that are available here in Bastrop. Our campaign concept is Welcome to It All, an original Texas town with a fresh approach to life. That hasn't changed. Our messaging has not changed, showcasing the environment of Bastrop, lending itself to creating diverse and customizable experiences and those that are unique and authentic. Our target audiences, those are folks that will have a part in Bastrop that they will be able to identify with and make their own story. We want to encourage, engage our travelers and our event planners to have an immersive travel and tie it back to Welcome to It All. These are our core business associations. We added two that are new from last year, which is Sevent, and there's, where's, oh, Mayor Pro Tom, Sevent doesn't stand for anything, it's just Sevent. There's no, there's no definition for that one.
Did you ask her what it stands for?
No, but I know he would.
He had to ask for acronym definitions and...
But there isn't, it's just, that's just what it is.
Thank you for saying that.
It's a lead generating source. And Helms Briscoe. So those are our two for the new, for the new year. Destination Marketing Accreditation Program, as I mentioned, we have been accepted and approved, and we've begun the work. I'm actually heading to my first training session on October 5th to get the certification that I need for the destination. Our community relations, which is a core part of our agreement, is, which we're finding to be more and more important in the destination world, is to build consistent messaging and synergy between traditional economic development strategies and tourism-related economic development strategies. Example, building our brand, attractions, new hotels, Table on Main, involving our community more in our tourism relations. Again, the same, the same thing, it's the value of the visitor and the economy and the role of the destination really must be better understood and appreciated, so we'll be focusing on that as we move forward in 1920. And our industry is headed indefinitely in a more community-driven visitor experience, and, which is great, because this is where we built our brand platform and our campaign on was building the visitor experience. We have market plans built for all 12 of our sectors as we did last year, and this is how we will measure them. We review these, the results of these metrics from last year at our joint council meeting, and this is what we will measure again as we move forward into the new fiscal year. Our strategies, so here's the newer things, if you will, that we will be focusing on, and that's that travel and tourism is shifting from the product-centric approach to a customer-centric approach, and this is where Bastrop fits in really nicely, because we are definitely customer or visitor-centric. Building the tourism pipeline, of course, and then always-on marketing. Basically, what that means is that we have well-timed outreach to expand our visitor revenue, and it lends ourselves to showcasing and telling our story in smaller, digestible bites over time instead of like one big blast. And then, of course, we want to plan and design for future tourism generators, community amenities, and infrastructure. So as we see needs or things that may be going on in other towns or cities, we will bring that back and share those things. Our budget, we'll move right into that. Revenue enhancements, that's out of sync, but those haven't changed. Electric vehicle charging, marketing collateral. We've actually gone out to bid for the sales of our meeting planner guides and visitor guides for advertisement, for co-op advertising promotions. We're doing some website advertising and some cooperative marketing, and we already have one cooperative marketing account under our wings. Oh, that's not very big. So there's our budget. Colin, can you help me with that one? Maybe not. There we go. Okay, so we have chosen to move $150,000 out of our reserves into... So we have chosen to move $150,000 out of our reserves into our income this year to beef up our, to go strictly towards the marketing bottom line, and that's just to beef up our marketing in certain industries, weddings being one of them. It's very lucrative for our partners here. Cooperative advertising, that's what I was just talking about, that's revenues that we've started to bring in that is outside of the hot funds. The hot fund, special event funding is the $75,000 that we award to people that want to have an event going on. We've already had several people applying already for next year. And then, of course, our city contract. Client development includes bid fees, fam tours. Fam tours are familiarization tours where we bring in like a meeting planner and have them come in, and we take them around, and we show them Bastrop, and we put them up in hotels, and treat them very well to try to have them choose Bastrop as the destination. And then, of course, our Hyatt partnerships fall under client development. Dues members and subscriptions is our associations. City Hot Fund Sponsorship, that's the event fund. Information Technology, local meetings and transportation, and then you'll see total sales and marketing budget, that's where we put the increase in revenues. Office expenses is leased telephone copier. Operational costs is legal audit, financial services, our personnel costs, and then trade shows and conferences. That's also a much bigger number than it was last year, and that's sales efforts for the meeting and events side of our business versus tourism. And that brings us to our total expenses and a balanced budget. Any questions?
If you miss Smith, council, do you have any questions for Ms. Smith? Mayor Protim Nelson?
Just a quick comment. Ms. Smith, the, in the past year, the efforts of you and your board to move this from concept to reality is, should be applauded. I really appreciate, I appreciate the changes that you've brought about in the economy budget and the concept of what we're trying to accomplish collectively. And with that, I'll go ahead and move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council, that's unanimously approved. Ms. Smith, you and your board, congratulations for a great year.
Thank you so much.
We look forward to another great year.
Thank you, I do too.
Thank you. Okay. Another person who waited for a really, really long time, and I owe her, and I'm going to pay her back, and so we are going to 9C. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2019-88 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving agreement for the provision of Main Street program support between the City of Bastrop and the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, repealing all resolutions in conflict, and providing an effective date. Ms. Gleason and Ms. Ryan.
Good evening. Angela and I are here this evening to get approval from y'all for the signature of the contract between the Bastrop EDC and the Main Street Program. Bastrop EDC has been gracious enough to lend their support of our City of Bastrop Main Street Program for another two years at $50,000 per year. So the contract has been executed by EDC, and we are now looking for a resolution to have it executed by the city.
Ms. Ryan, do you have anything you want to add? So council, this is one of those, you got to check all the boxes, you got to do all the rules, and BEDC can't do a contract without council knowing BEDC's doing a contract, so that's why we're here. Any comments or questions for Ms. Gleason or Ms. Ryan?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
And a race to the second goes to Mr. Peterson. And are there any comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, congratulations, ladies.
Thank you for y'all's time.
Doing a sidebar, do you want me to do the consent again the next? I think we have some folks. Go back to the work session, okay. All right. Do you want me to head Sean for, for me? Okay. We're going to go to work session item 5B. We've got some folks in the audience that'll be presenting, and they may not want to spend the evening with us. Receive a presentation and discuss the possibilities of allowing an entry monument sign and a wayfinding kiosk sign pilot program for the Piney Creek Bend subdivision with Sean Kirkpatrick, Director of Public Affairs for KB Homes Austin. Chief Al Gil.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council, city manager. I wanted to start off by saying with recent developments that we talked about that took place this summer, and our ability for, to develop an annex has been significantly impacted, so therefore, the need for infill development is even more essential to the city, being able to maintain fiscal sustainability and be able to do what we need to do. So some of the challenges for our builders and our developers are signage. As you know, our current ordinance has very specific requirements for signage that takes place, and that could be very challenging for our developers. Having infill development, as we all know, is not only good for our fiscal sustainability, but it impacts our economic development in all types of ways by being able to provide single-family, multifamily housing, and, which includes for workforce housing, and it's just, it's all just, it all capitalizes on each other, if you will, and it's in our best interest to do this. So we're asking, we're going to, asking for a policy discussion to see how that would take place, and then coincidentally, on September 10th, Mr. Kirkpatrick came and approached us and said that KB Homes would like to do a presentation and talk about how different signs, such as wayfinding signs and monument signs, may impact not just positively KB Homes, but the entire city and the entire development community.
Mayor, council, I want to, I want to build on something the chief has said. In order for KB Homes to be able to put up the sign they're requesting, they need a waiver. And the reason we put this on your agenda tonight is exactly what the chief is saying. We need a policy discussion. We don't believe KB Homes are the only developers going to be impacted by a lack of signing on infill. So we wanted to have a holistic conversation at this level, rather than just dealing with it on a waiver-by-waiver basis, because there's perhaps some policy changes that we need to take into consideration in our new codes that just resolve this problem or make it easier. So they're not circumventing the process. I specifically requested that they come, because I see this as a bigger picture than just KB Homes.
All right. Mr. Kirkpatrick, and if you're at home, we're on page 58 of the packet.
Mayor, council, city manager, Chief Al Gil, thank y'all for having us tonight. I'm going to try to keep this as brief as possible, as y'all know from past experience, I've never had a mic I didn't like. So we're, I'm the Director of Public Affairs with KB Home. April Merchinson, our Director of Marketing, is here as well. Melissa Shear, who's our Regional Sales Manager for Piney Creek Bend, as well as our South Communities, is also here today as well. The two pictures that are used in this slide here are both from Piney Creek Bend and representative of the product that we're offering at the Carter Street Development. Brief history of KB Homes, we're founded in 1957, so we're a 60-year-old company. We're a recognized industry leader, specifically in our energy efficiency and our Energy Star and Waterwise products that we offer in our homes. Fire-centric, we really are a personalized builder, built-to-order, which means our customers, 86% of the Austin Division's homes are sold to individuals that come in and select their lot, select their floor plan, their elevations. They go through our design center at our office and select all of the features, and so it's really, the house is built around our customer. Piney Creek Bend is a community that we actually acquired from a previous developer, WMB Piney Creek was the previous developer. We started construction in April of 18 with our first recorded sale in February of 2019, and our first closing in June of 2019. So our first residents have started moving in now, and so we have six months or so of history of marketing the community, and can recognize what's going on with infill development, and recognize some of the challenges that we face and that others in the future are going to face. I appreciate the chief's comments and the city manager's comments, because those are real, and you're going to see that as y'all move through infill development as the V3 code becomes reality in the next quarter. Piney Creek Bend is located off Carter Street, railroad tracks, Riverwood Drive is the cross street right before the railroad tracks. You can kind of see the routes into it coming off of 71 at Chestnut Street on the west, coming off at 95, or off of 71 onto 95, and coming down either Chestnut or Cedar Street. If you've noticed any of our marketing to date, we direct folks off of 95 onto Cedar, because that is the most direct route. If you're coming from the west and you put it into Google Maps, it actually will drop you off on the College Street and bring you just north, or just east of downtown, over to Cedar Street. So it's a little bit of a challenge with the digital mapping services and how they take our customers into downtown Bastrop, especially with the bridge construction forthcoming, but our marketing signage brings them off 95 and Cedar currently. Our overall layout, we're 170 lots, give or take, I think it's 176 is in the PD, 172. We currently have Phase 1 on the ground, with Phase 2 working its way through the planning process. Our community team out here, we have to give them recognition for all of the organic marketing that they've been doing. Our Bastrop Homecoming Parade float, which you see in the picture in the top left there, they've saved that float and are planning and using it again during the lighted Christmas parade. Our KB Cares Initiative, the most recent was the Chambers of Commerce New Teacher Orientation Welcome Bags. We've done a couple of projects out here through KB Cares. But as you can see, we've been organically promoting the community and working with local businesses to co-promote as well as ourselves. The challenges that we face is, we are in infill development in North Bastrop, just adjacent to what's going to be the north end, Character District, just north of Old Town there, and we face the same challenges as anybody that gets off of Highway 71 or 95 coming into downtown Bastrop in that last mile directional signage. And we think we've got some solutions to offer up as a pilot program tonight that will not only benefit us, but will benefit the merchants downtown and all of the community interests that are along those routes. The proposed solutions that we have, first one on the list is wayfinding signage. You can see a sample of that in the bottom right-hand corner here. We think they need to be sized appropriately. That drawing that's got sign is scalable from four to six feet, but with an only builder on there and the number of community interest placards, you're probably looking at the shorter end of that, providing that last mile directional along the route. We're proposing at this moment a no-cost program for the city. It would be managed by our sign vendor, funded by our program and marketing program as part of the directional signage for the community. There will be additional blades that are available, as you can see, there's four blades on there to put to community interests. You can imagine coming off of 71 onto Chestnut, pointing to downtown, as you're coming across the bridge, being able to point folks to the Opera House or to the visitor's center in the reverse direction, going less bound off of 95, not only coming downtown, but being able to point to the convention center. And if we can find a location down near Main Street, we'll be able to do the same thing there to point folks to the end of Main. That's going to be a little bit more challenging. And it eliminates our need for ground signage, if you've seen our bandit sign program, under the current ordinance, and I can't speak to the V3 ordinance, they're allowed on Saturday morning to Sunday evening on private property, and this would eliminate that need, because they would be out seven days a week and look professional, clean, and help beautify along those streets. So we're proposing six to nine sign, six to nine kiosk locations, all on private property with owner permission. We would go out and seek those owners' permission, and no property used for residential purpose. So what you're talking about here is looking at commercial property or undeveloped property that's owned appropriately and isn't being used as a house or apartment complex or any of those residential uses. And we think from looking at the routes in each direction, you're probably looking at two to three signs, all kind of culminating at Tracy's Drive-In to drop folks onto Cedar headed down to Carter Street. Once you get to the end of Carter Street, we're going to propose something a little bit different in the next ask, because that is all residential corner there, and we want to be respectful of those folks that are living in their houses and the beautification, and being able to be good stewards along with them. Are there any questions on the wayfinding program before I go on? I think this would probably be a good point to take, questions.
Council, any questions? Hi, so far so good.
So far, so good. So moving on, monumentation. In our original landscape plans for the community, they called for, and they were submitted with the original construction plans, it called for an entry monument at the corner there of Bridgewood Drive and Carter Street. Bridgewood is actually the railroad tracks. If you drive by there today, you can see that it's been removed. When our sign contractor came to permit that, the current sign ordinance allows for entry monumentation at our primary entrance and our secondary entrance, but it does not allow for off-premise signage, which that would be classified as off-premise signage. And so we come here today to go, you know, we think it would finish the look, we also think it will help with that last mile directional. The other thing is with the public realm piece of Piney Creek, with the ultimately the loop trail system around there, we have some options to be able to adjust the sign language to be representative of, this is the Piney Creek Trailhead, the Piney Creek Trail, right there at that intersection. We're willing to work with council and with staff in adapting that language to be appropriate for recognizing that that's in the public realm. A couple of notes here, this area is in what is designated through the PD as open space, and at some point is going to be dedicated to the city. We currently have a license agreement into the planning department for legal review, and what a license agreement does is it obligates the HOA, the Homeowners Association, to maintain these areas where this trail is going to be at no expense to the city. And so the signage here would also fall under that license agreement, would be the responsibility of the Homeowners Association. One of the things that we have thought about to, at that Cedar and Carter intersection, it's an all-residential corner, that would help draw attention to where you're supposed to go when you get to that corner, is placing three commercial height flag poles behind the monumentation. The current code, and that's all I can speak to tonight, recognizes the difference between residential flag poles and commercial flag poles and maximum height. And if I remember correctly, the maximum height of a commercial flag pole is 28 feet. We have no fear there that the flag poles are going to fall unless it's seriously implemented, whether and what they're going to hit is a monument or a fence behind there that are insured and being maintained by the Homeowners Association. The purpose of the three flag poles, we'd fly the US flag, we'd fly the Texas flag, and we'd fly a development flag. And during what we refer to as the development period, which is while we're selling, we'd fly the KB Home flag. Once we're done selling, we'd convert that over to the Piney Creek Bend logo and fly the Piney Creek Bend flag there. Another option, and we're open to discussion on this, is to place two flag poles with a larger US flag, and then a second flag pole with two smaller flags, one for Texas and the KB Home flag, and then remove our flag and just fly a Texas flag there. So we're flexible on that, and we think the three flag poles gives a good symmetry behind the sign. It'll all be lit, we have electricity inside the subdivision. We stopped soon enough from getting the sign permit, that we didn't run electricity in it, we'll still maintain the easement, you can get electricity there through the easement, and so it, the backlit sign, if you've been by there to either of the entrance signs, we use backlit LED letters, which put off a nice, pretty glow to them, so the sign would be lit in that same way, it provides electricity, make sure that we're lighting the flags appropriately. And that is my presentation. I don't think y'all have ever heard me that short.
No. Y'all have been good. You rubbed off on him well. Council, do you care about three flags or two flag poles? Does anyone care?
We don't care.
Councilmember Ennis?
I do have a question about the other, the other monument sign. Is that, are those placed in agreement with the, you don't negotiate with the individual property owner, you negotiate that with the city?
We, as is proposed tonight, we would be negotiating with the individual property owners, as we've discussed with the city manager and the chief, that we wouldn't be placing those in the right-of-way, because it's not a right-of-way agreement. And so along the route, we would have to identify private property owners. That could include the city for select locations across the street, makes a lot of sense at the convention center, but we haven't had those staff-level discussions to get down to the minutia of what makes, where specifically it makes sense. The one location I can tell you it does specifically make sense, and you'll see our A-frame signage at Tracy's Drive-In, is Tracy's Drive-In makes that location to be able to get folks turned down. Cedar Street makes sense, because that's kind of where we're going to converge at. But beyond that, we haven't had any specific discussion with other private, with other private property owners, and that's, that's where we would go from this conversation, is to go have those conversations. I learned this the hard way. We went and picked locations in another community by driving. What we actually found out later was the best way to pick locations is actually get out and walk the routes. And so what looks good in a car doesn't necessarily look good on the ground when you're walking. We were able to identify a location in another community that literally was in front of two light poles, in front of two power poles, and it's blocking the view of those two power poles from the street level, and it really provided some buffer from that view.
My question is centered around the fact that, my thinking is it should be a partnership with the city, so that the decision of where they go is not KB's alone.
Correct. We would need to get those approved. These programs typically involve, in other communities, the way it works is we propose locations to our sign vendor, who then comes to the city and proposes those to the city. In this case, it would be us coming directly and going, here's what we're thinking about, city, what do you think? Is it okay? If it's okay, then we move forward. If it's not okay, we go back and propose other locations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ennis, would you be comfortable with, from a policy standpoint, I really don't think we need staff negotiating with private property owners about the location. So I think the process that Mr. Kirkpatrick talked about, that they have to go talk to Chalmers and anybody else, they bring Chalmers and anybody else, they bring a plan to us and say, these people have okayed it, this is where the signs would be, are you, city, okay with it? Then I'm okay with staff or council being involved in that. But I, front end, I don't think that's a, and I don't think that's what you were saying, correct?
I'm not talking about front end. I just want the city involved in it some.
And they'll eventually need a permit of some sort, so we would have to sign off on the locations.
Got you.
I think Councilmember Jackson and then Mayor Protim Nelson, Councilmember Jackson?
No, I see it as a win-win situation, especially with the signs, they're directional, they'll help some of our points of interest in the city. And I love the flag idea, and you already mentioned the fact that they're going to be lighted, so that works well for me too. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Mayor Protim Nelson?
Just some clarification, in public realm, you're saying there will be some sort of instrument that's going to place responsibility for the care consideration in that public area on the HOA?
Yes, sir. So typically what happens in those situations is the HOA enters into a license agreement with the city to maintain that right-of-way along Carter Street and then that community trail around the community. It's a pretty common arrangement when it's a public park or open space in that instance for the HOA to enter into those agreements. And so it's included in the HOA dues for the community to maintain that realm around the community and that trail system. So it's some of the.
For perpetuity?
For perpetuity.
So that includes any type of repairs or anything?
It is.
Councilmember Rogers?
I have a question about your wayfinding signs. After, let's say it all gets going, they're installed, does it become the city's responsibility to maintain them, to keep them looking nice, or who comes back and maintains them five years later when they're looking injured?
There's actually a contractor that we will actually contract with that will install them and maintain them on our behalf. And with that, once we get to the end of our development period and we're done selling, the signs theoretically would come down unless the city would want to enter into an agreement, a separate agreement to maintain them. So you get three years down the road, we're leaving that community, and y'all decide you want to keep them, you can decide to enter into a direct contract with that provider and those property owners.
Or not.
Or not.
And these are not, they're not suggesting they're lit, they're just.
These will not be lit.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
They'll meet, if you zoom in on the specifications on all of these, they meet all of the text dot standards with the breakaway at the bottom, the sign reflectivity, all of those. This sign contractor does this in several communities around.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. One comment that I would make from a policy standpoint, when the, once the permit's given, city manager, I think it would be good for it to have a time period. And that doesn't mean that you guys can't ask for an extension, but I don't like open-ended, they're going to be here forever. No, Sean said they were only going to be, so we ought to have, these signs, we're approving them in these locations for this amount of time, and, you know, and if you're expanding or if sales aren't going quite, if you want some more time, I'm not saying you can't have it, but there needs to be a definitive date that we know that they go away. I personally, is, council, does that feel like a good policy? Okay. All right. City manager, did you get what you needed from a policy discussion? KB Homes, any questions? Y'all are happy?
No, we're good.
Excellent.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. City manager, Chief Olga.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Nice to meet you guys. Okay, council, we can do, the two items that I'm trying to take care of are the consent agenda, and I'll let everyone in the audience know that item eight D has been pulled from the consent agenda, so we will discuss that individually. And then we also have several folks in the audience for items nine A and nine B. Do you have a, you want to do consent first, or you, I don't care. All right. All right, city secretary, get ready. You're going to read the consent agenda, but you are not going to read item eight D, which is pulled.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item eight A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the September ninth, twenty nineteen, special joint council and visit Bastrop meeting, September tenth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting and special call September seventeenth, twenty nineteen meeting. Eight B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number two zero one nine dash four five of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, adopting the Bastrop Power and Light Electrical Service Standards for Underground Electric Secondary Service attached as exhibit A. The Bastrop Power and Light Electrical Service Standards for Underground Electric Permier Service attached as exhibit B. And the Bastrop Power and Light Electrical Construction Service Standards attached as exhibit C, in compliance with HB three one six seven, and providing for findings of fact, amendment, enforcement, a repellent, and severability, establishing an effective date and proper notice and meeting. Item eight C, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero one nine dash eight nine, approving the city of Bastrop purchasing policy which is attached as exhibit eight, providing for repellent clause and establishing an effective date. Item eight E, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero one nine dash nine five, approving a memorial tree program in the Fairview Cemetery as attached in exhibit eight, providing for repellent clause and establishing an effective date. Item eight F, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero one nine dash nine eight of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, supporting the Baron de Bastrop chapter of the Daughters of the Republic of Texas, to pursue funding for the Stephen of Austin and the Baron de Bastrop sculptures to be created by Clint Howard, owner of Beepin' the Heart Art Foundry, with no matching funds from the city of Bastrop, providing for a severability and repellent clause and establishing an effective date. Note, original resolution had incorrect name of the DRT chapter. This resolution is the same but with the correct name. Item eight G, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero one nine dash nine four of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a community support service agreement to the Bastrop County Historical Society for services associated with operating, marketing, and providing museum and visitor center services at a cost of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand and one hundred and twenty-four and zero dollars, attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the contract, providing for a repellent clause and establishing an effective date. Item eight H, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero one nine dash nine three of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a community support service agreement to the Bastrop Opera House for service associated with operating, marketing, and providing cultural art and theater services at a cost of one hundred and twenty-six thousand and zero dollars, attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the contract, providing for a repellent clause and establishing an effective date. Item eight I, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero one nine dash nine one of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a community support service agreement to the YMCA of Austin-Bastrop branch, associated with providing recreation and pool services at a cost of seventy-nine thousand and eight hundred and zero dollars, attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the contract, providing for a repellent clause and establishing an effective date. Item eight J, consider action to approve resolution number R dash two zero one nine dash nine two of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a community support service agreement to the Lost Pines Art Center, associated with operating, marketing, and providing cultural art services at a cost of eighty-five thousand and zero dollars, attached as exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the contract, providing for a repellent clause and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda items.
Excellent job, city secretary. Council?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Innis and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Innis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We'll now take up item eight D that was pulled for individual consideration. Consider action to approve resolution number R twenty nineteen dash ninety of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the financial management policy which is attached as exhibit A, providing for repellent clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Waldron? Since it was on consent agenda, she's probably just ready for questions. Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, yes, mayor. I had asked for you to pull this because I, and I just thought there was a, my thought was to add some sort of saying that if the city plans to get money from the EDC or they get reimbursed somehow, if they're planning for that, or they're planning to ask for from text dot or something, that we're made aware of that. Let's say we're building a road and they know half of it's going to get, or they're going to ask for reimbursement, that the council's been made aware of that prior to approving whichever. That's what I was, I'm not sure exactly how to word it, but that's what I was trying to ask for.
Well, at the last council meeting, we had had a discussion about grants, and I think the, it felt like some of what we were asking for was kind of getting forced into grants, so you're not wanting to force it into the wrong place. You're just wanting to say, hey, if you're spending or taking money, we want to know.
Right. Because I know it doesn't fall under the grants, like, I mean, it's not everything's a grant lots of times.
So what we had discussed was that we would need to bring a budget amendment forward, which kind of reflects the revenue that we're expecting to get and the expenditure that would offset that revenue.
Right, I guess what I'm looking for is that I'd like to know before you request the money from somewhere else, not just after you get it and this is where we're putting it.
And I thought the conversation was when we do that, I would just think you.
So I think, are you looking, Councilmember Rogers, are you wanting something to be in the policy?
Right, I just want, you know, because you may not be, I mean, we might not all be sitting in our seats, so I just thought it might be something in writing that says that they'll be informed somehow, whichever, doesn't always have to come to one of our meetings, but I'd like to see it in writing that the council be informed, whether it's an email or not, which is fine.
Okay, Councilmember Innis, you put on your, like, do you want to comment on this as well?
I'd rather see it brought, for transparency's sake, I'd rather see it brought to an actual meeting and discuss, not in just.
So are you wanting something in the, a sentence in the financial policy that assures that? Because that's what I think Councilmember Rogers is saying.
Yes.
Do you, do either one of you, or does anyone on council have, or Ms. Waldron, do you guys have a sentence that you think we can stick in that would cover this?
Well, I'm trying to get what he wants without creating some undue burden for either party, because there's some things that we go into knowing we're going to be reimbursed. And we have to spend the money to get the money. But I don't sense that's what you were really interested in.
I just want to know about it before it's requested.
That is what I'm interested in. So for instance, if it's, let's say it's a budgeted item and you're going to build a sidewalk and in the budget for ten thousand dollars, I'd like to know that in your mind you plan to ask somebody for reimbursement in that, so you, just see what I'm saying? So if you know in advance that you plan to request reimbursement, I would like to know that.
What's driving this is the BEDC discussion last week when you made your presentation to BEDC and we didn't know anything about it. Bottom line.
That's right. And so the easy way for us to fix that, and we're going to do that in the fall, is to identify projects that we believe are eligible and we bring those to you and that solves the problem. But what I'm always concerned about is shotgun approaches to fix a sniper issue. And you've got a very specific issue that we should have informed you relative to one of our partners. And I certainly respect that. What I'm, what I don't think you care about, but maybe you do, and that's what I'm trying to figure out, is we spend money and then we have to ask for reimbursement through grant funding. We do that on all of our FEMA grants. I don't think every time we apply for reimbursement under a FEMA grant, you want that on the council agenda. So, but when you say grants, that's what I'm obligated to give you.
I'm off the grant thing. You fix the grant thing as far as I'm concerned. Where I am now is our sister organizations, BEDC, Visit Bastrop, any other sister organization that we might have, that we go to and we say, we want some money from you, we want to know about that before you go and ask them for money. Just so for transparency's sake, so our citizens know, and so when somebody comes up and says, why were you asking BEDC for money? We don't go, I have no idea. Didn't know we were doing it.
So the issue is BEDC, Visit Bastrop, do we have another community partner we would ask for money from? Well, I would make the comment that one of the other events where this type of conversation has taken place was like table on Main. So it would be with the chamber, with the Convention Center, and it's the outside perspective. If you are a taxpayer and you say, they're just moving money around between the buckets, we want to know that. We're not saying it's wrong, but we want to know that in advance so that from a communication standpoint and not an after, after fact. Am I close, Councilmember Rogers and Innis, is that?
You're hitting a home run.
Okay. So, but she, we got to frame the problem for them to be able to come up with a solution. So what I'm hearing is, as usual in all things, it's about communication. And so we want something in the financial policy that assures that there will be timely communication with council about any funds that move between buckets, and I know you'll have to, somebody will come up with a better word than a bucket. Because you want to know about it and you want to know, Councilmember Innis, I think your point is, an email can get lost in the shuffle, so, and Councilmember Rogers, your point is people change over, you want to know that going forward, whoever is sitting on council is.
So it's not, it's not clear to a citizen that you're getting it from the EDC where that's tax money, which, not, the average citizen doesn't see all the different kinds of tax money, you know, whether it's hot tax money. So they just see the city getting the tax money that the city gave that person, but we're getting it back for something else. See what I'm saying? So I'm just trying to make it clear so the average person can understand.
So, mayor, I think you got me about eighty percent there. So timely communication issue, satisfied with an email, or is that something that has to go with it?
Agenda.
Councilmember Innis says agenda.
Yeah, I think, I think for documentation-wise, just like, I know that you've had a hard time the last year, so I'm trying to find the documentation of where it happened, I think having hard documents of it happening is best.
Council, if they, since Ms. Waldron, and she'll be doing it tonight, presents our monthly financial update, can it be like one slide on that, that it's updated? Or do you want it to be case by case? Or Councilmember Innis, what are?
It can be whenever she has to request funds as far as I'm concerned, or once a month, whatever. All I want to know is for us to know about it before it's requested and for our citizens to know before it's requested.
Yeah, I believe she could do it on her report, letting us know this will be coming in the future, I'm going to be asking them or something.
So in the policy, it doesn't need to be specific in the method in which, it could be a budget amendment, it could be in the financial report.
No, they want to know about it before you bring a budget. They want it on the agenda and they want to get permission. That's why I am, what we hear and what they want are two different things. So when Rebecca wants sponsorships from one of our community partners, she's got to put that on the agenda and have a conversation with them. That's what I'm hearing from Rebecca.
Yeah. Yeah, Councilmember Innis, I think that's what you're, Councilmember Rogers?
Yeah.
And the body language of the city manager council is be very careful what you ask for because it may get to the point that it ends up being a whole lot. So we just need to work with each other, and if we make an amendment, we make an amendment. But, and to your point, Ms. Waldron, I think maybe, because one of the things we talked about, and I'm kind of going back to grants, if, making it, LCRAs or Bastrop Power and Light, like, if we sign the letter on Friday, we can have money for a playground. Well, we don't want to miss out on the playground because we had to come to a council agenda meeting. You know, there's some timing things. We don't want to do something stupid, but we don't want to get a phone call that says, why were you guys asking for sixty-six thousand dollars? I have no idea what you're talking about. We're trying to find something between those two extremes.
And we do not, that's where I was going next, was we don't want to impact the timeliness or slow you down. That's not what this is about. It's just so we're on the same page you are.
So, is a LCRAs a community partner or is it just exchanging funds amongst what we get money for? Because when we expand that, then we will need, oh, we'll have to have a work session on this. I, I'm going to go ahead and rudely go first and we'll poll the audience. For me, it's, if I'm a citizen of the city of Bastrop and I have paid those tax dollars somewhere, those are the ones that I'm wanting transparency for. So for me, that means Visit Bastrop, I want to know if we're giving or taking money from them, which is different than the.
them, which is different than the LCPA, in, in my opinion, but I'm only one person. Mayor Protim Nelson, you haven't had a chance to talk, would you like to share some wisdom with us?
For clarification, I mean, one of the things we need to recognize is the various, various funding streams that are out there. Competitive grants, I think we've addressed that. The, when we put together the budget, we know what, what expenditures are going to be reimbursed at the beginning of the budget session, at the budget process, am I correct? About city managers? And it's, it's the, it's the odds and ends, the exceptions that come out when we have to go out and request funds from the, our partner entities or from outside entities that are not competitive grants or are not carried into the budget, so they're accepted to the budget, which are brought before us, and now we're requesting two ways. One, prior to us asking for that, and two, when we make the budget amendments. Am I, am I correct again? Would that sat, would that satisfy what we're looking at, Councilmember Ennis? With the varying funding streams that are out there, we're now, we're, we're now asking, and rightfully so, that when we go out to, to some of these outliers that are there, these accepted to the rule, we're bringing it back to council to know, so the council knows and can, can react to the constituency that we're requesting these funds, and then those funds have to be brought back after they're requested for the appropriate budget amendment. So we're, we're bringing them in twice, and which I think is the right way to do it, because both are requesting in, both are receiving in.
I'm good with that. Councilmember Ennis, are you good with that? You got to turn on your mic or I can't hear you.
You know me, you gotta, I gotta see it on paper, that was, could kind of live itself.
Sounds good.
So Mayor Protim, are we, is that a policy statement that we're going to put in, or you think by process, we've got it covered?
I, I think if we do it that way, by process, we have it, we have it covered, but it makes, it makes a clear distinction between the funding streams and what, and the communication factor.
Let us take a stab at it, and we will bring it back next.
Okay, so with that, we won't take an action on item 8B?
I would take one.
Okay, so we have pulled item 8B, it'll be tabled and put on the next appropriate agenda, thank you very much. Citizen comments, Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up for citizen comments?
Do you have one, Mayor?
I think that, Mr. Liriano, I, you're, you filled out for citizens' comments, but I think you really want to talk about Hunter's Crossing, which is on the agenda. Is that correct? Okay, I changed it to 9A. So other than that, do we have anybody?
We have none, Mayor.
Okay, so citizens' comments were, are done with. Council, it's 10 till 8, are you doing okay, or do we need a, a quick break? Okay, I have a request for a bio break, it is 7:48, a short five minutes, it's 7:48, we're in recess. Wait for the city secretary. Calling, you write down that we're at 7:52, we're back in session, let's help her out, okay? All right, we are, we've got two people in the audience that don't want to spend the night in Bastrop, so we're going to go ahead and take 9F. I am on the bottom of page four, item 9F. There you go. Consider action to approve resolution number R2019-85 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving a task order with MWM Design Group to provide the services of city engineer in the amount of $156,448 attached in exhibit A authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documentation, providing for appeal clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In 2000, excuse me, in July of 2018, we actually awarded with the request for qualifications to several engineering firms, MWM Design was one of those. But in, but in the light of the, sorry, light of the new House Bill 3167, in order to be scalable and flexible, we've decided to sub out the engineering portion and that we've decoupled out of the development process, and we've asked MWM to provide us a task order, that's what you see here tonight, and we have Mr. Tony Bonadorno, who will be acting as the city engineer, and he will be here to answer any questions or just say you can meet.
So Mayor and Council, you are aware that we created a construction manager position that is very much in Jerry Pallady's wheelhouse, that's what he does extraordinarily well. And Jerry approached me and asked if he could have that position, and we've talked about it and think that that is an awesome fit. He's got that position lined out, got the forms lined out, man, he is, he's living the dream, if you will.
Yeah, exactly.
And the, the importance of that position clearly is to make sure that as things are constructed, prior to our, accepting them as completed, that we need to make sure that they're built to at least live their useful life. So as we began to address House Bill 3167, we don't know from one supplemental date to the next, how many plan sets we will get. And it is very difficult for a small city of our size to be able to handle a lot of development at one time. So by having MWM Design as our city engineer, we only pay for the services when we use them. Tony is a great fit for us, we've worked with Tony on several different projects, so Tony will participate as a sitting member of our Development Review Committee on items where the city engineer is required to speak to council, you'll see him just like you will tonight, he'll present it as if he is staff. We have given him a city email address, so that all of the business that he conducts on our behalf is captured by our server and lets us handle record retention. There is an assistant city engineer by the name of Matt Rector. Matt is a former director of Public Works in another community near us and has an extensive background much like Tony. And so recognizing the challenges that we have with some of the recent legislation, we think that this really solves a lot of issues that we didn't know how to handle, and so we are presenting this for your consideration to see.
Thank you, city manager. One comment I want to make is that, you guys know that I toured the seating site, and Mr. Pallady gets just really great reviews from folks on a really consistent basis on helping the construction, and so I just want to thank him for all of the hard work that he's done, and the construction's going to be the name of the game for the next two, three years of our career. So, Council, any questions for Mr. Jobe? Tony, you want to say anything?
Yes.
Council? Got to stand up and say hi, they need to all know who you are, and you have to say your last name, so they all know how to say it.
Hi, I'm Tony Bonadorno. Thank you, I, I appreciate this opportunity and, and look forward to, to getting to work and, and seeing the city grow. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Tony? Thank you very much, Tony. Much like the fact that we have Allen's firm as our city attorney, there are a lot of towns our size that have contracted with a city engineer, they're able to pull in experts and, and take care of us as our needs change, and they can do that a lot faster than we can hire another city employee. Councilmember Ennis?
City manager, I know that in the past, we've had some outsourcing in other areas, and in some cases, it slowed us down in our processes. We, we're, we've got that covered in this situation.
Yes, sir, Tony is on the distribution list, so when the plans come in, he gets them just like staff does. As you well know, we have reorganized the operations so that we have a 14-day turnaround on plans we have, our processes, we get in and out on 23 days or less, and so Tony comes every Thursday, communicates routinely with Trey, so we're very pleased with the communication.
I figured you had it covered, I just wanted to.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Just, just to be clear, there's no retainage, this is actually, that we pay for services rendered and billed?
Yes, sir, and this is the salary and benefits for the city engineer position, and what we will do, is it will be transferred to professional services, the position will still exist because it exists whether it's in-house or outsourced, but this money will be earmarked for professional services, and it is on a, on a as-needed basis, and billed as used.
And second question, there's no duplication of, of effort between some of the other engineering firms that we have, or we, have we eliminated that possible?
No, sir, Mr. Bonadorno and Rector are going to serve as city engineer, and it's very clear that they will do plan review, very clear that they will answer the development related questions. There are processes in our development manual when you have to accept infrastructure, and that requires the city engineer to sign off on it. Tony will also have the authority to review the conceptual preliminary and final drainage plans, and the public improvement plan is also an administrative act that Tony will have signature authority on.
Councilmember Ennis? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. He was first, Councilmember Ennis?
I was going to make a motion to approve, but I'll pull that back.
I just wanted to make a comment, but I think this is a wonderful idea.
God bless you.
This will give us, this will give us time to know in, in a couple of years that we, you know, when we're spending enough to actually have one on staff, so I think it's a great, great plan, city manager, thank you.
One question that I have, is MWM then not going to design things? How do we have, is it a potential conflict of interest if he's reviewing plans that were produced by his firm?
In, in that instance, if that skill set is something that the city has an interest in pursuing, then we would outsource those to another engineering firm.
Okay, I just don't want to put Tony in a bad position, or us either.
And, and my comment to him was, this is not going to be punitive, we would not keep them from bidding on the work, but if they are the design engineer, then we would have somebody else, because as y'all well know, we now have seven or eight engineering firms that we work with routinely, so we have.
So you do a task order with another firm?
That's exactly right.
Okay, Tony?
Yeah, as a clarification for that, I think that'd be mostly related to land development type projects, that we don't have any business plans in order to, to go, go after those type of projects in Bastrop.
Very good point. I just didn't want anybody to see MWM somewhere else and be like, wait a minute, so I'm just wanting to get everything out and open.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilmember Ennis?
I want to, I want to tag on to Councilmember Rogers' comments about great idea and, and make a motion to approve this. Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Councilmember Peterson, is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Tony, welcome to the team, we enjoy working with you. All right, Council, there's one more young lady in the off, in the audience that would like to go home this evening, and we are moving to the item just above, 9E. Consider action to approve resolution number R2019, it's still you, Trey, dash 84 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas awarding a contract for the Gilz Branch Drainage Channel Replacement Project located at the corner of Highway 71 and Lover's Lane to Forsyth Brothers Infrastructure LLC of Maynor, Texas in the amount of $193,203, as attached in exhibit A authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a appealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we discussed earlier, this is one of those hazardous mitigation grants through FEMA, it's a 90% match. Let me click this slide here so we can all understand the area we're talking about, and this may help a little more. But in 2016, there was some severe flooding, it took away some debris and some, the bottom of the concrete line ditch, basically, and you can see in those three areas, it floated off. So those were, caused quite a bit of damage, approximately about 5,000 square feet of damage. We contacted Strand and Associates to do the design, we have now received the bids ranging from 193, 203 to 349, 999, 88. We have Ms. Holly Schrader here as well to answer any engineering questions, and we just make the, we move to approve.
Mr. Jobe, for one thing, I don't know if it's because of FEMA, but there were like 900 pages in the packet over this, like, the contract got duplicated or something, and please don't do that anymore.
You got it, and I'm sure some of it was FEMA and some of it was contracted, yes.
Honest to God, the bid tab was really all we needed, so I appreciate you over communicating, but that was, I really do think a contract's in there twice, it just went on and on and on.
Say no more, that's all I need to hear.
But more importantly, as I went through the on and on and on, I was unable to locate the opinion of probable cost. What was the engineer's opinion of probable cost?
It was just a little over 200,000, I'm going to let Holly answer that if I remember correctly.
So I'm Holly Schrader with Strand Associates, and our total construction cost was 232,000.
Okay, so just to put that in perspective for Council, so the engineer estimated, well, they don't call them engineers estimate anymore because attorneys got involved, so it's an opinion of probable cost, was 232,000, and the bids ranged from 193 to 349. If you're in the business, if they're really far apart, that, somebody's forgotten something, and that, that makes you scared. So the fact that 193 to 349 between that number of bidders is, that, that's pretty good, that, that's not that much of a, a percentage wise. The fact that the opinion of probable cost was 232, and you had two bids below and four bids above. four bids above, the engineer's office is going whoop-whoop because they don't want to be the low bidder, but they also don't want to be the high bidder. And you did express some, in the transmittal letter said somebody should double-check their finances. Mr. Job, did we do that?
We had. We went back and checked all the references, and we're good to go.
Okay. When I looked through their bid tabs specifically, I didn't see anything major out of order, and Strand is certainly with the one caveat of just double-check, but they're posting the bond. It appeared that Strand's comfortable with Forsyth, correct?
Correct.
All right, that was my question. Council, anybody else have a question? Mayor Protim Nelson?
Were there any substitutes or applicable equals requested in this that kind of changed and made them a little bit?
Change order? No.
The mayor stole my other question, so.
Sorry. Sorry for stealing. Okay, I won't steal your motion. I moved to approve. There we go. We have a motion from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. There's a lot of people in the community that are going to be happy to see those channel improvements made. So thank you very much. Feel free to start immediately. Okay. Excellent. All right, thank you for your patience. We are going to be moving to items 9A and 9B. We'll take 9A first. I have three folks signed up to speak. Hold a public hearing and consider action to approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 2019 dash forty of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, related to the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, approving a 2019 amended and restated service and assessment plan, including fiscal year 2020 assessment role for the district, attached as Exhibit A, ratifying and confirming prior actions of the city council in connection with the district, resolving matters incident and related thereto, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Hyde?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
May I make a moment?
Oh, I'm sorry. And Mayor Protim Nelson will be refusing himself.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Today is a second public hearing that we're having with regards to the annual adoption of the Service and Assessment Plan for the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District. As the council knows and recalls, in 2003, the city council adopted and established the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District in order to provide, as a financing vehicle, in order for the development of the Hunter's Crossing District, that provided for 283 acres. We had an extensive public hearing on September 10th when this was first adopted, and so I'm going to move forward with regards to this item in order to just respond to some of the issues that we had. There was some discussion with regards to the cost of the pit, and we'd like to clarify some of those issues for your consideration in the second reading tonight. First of all, there were a number of attorneys that discussed different opinions or ideas with regards to this assessment. As a reminder, the Service and Assessment Plan, despite the fact there's been subdivisions of land and designations of zoning districts, et cetera, since 2003, 2004, when it was created, the Service and Assessment Plan had not been updated to catch up with that. And so that's one of the things, the major things that this does. And in doing so, it provides a great deal of clarification and clarity for the property owners. So one of the things is, how does a situation of this type where you have the city and the property owners and the developer come to an agreement outside of court in order to reconcile the pit after it not been updated for several years? Well, first of all, taking this case to court creates an unknown. The circumstances in this case could be an all-or-nothing proposition for both parties. The, a court using its power of equity could evaluate the pit and determine that under the organization, there is more cost associated to the pit to the property owners and that the developer is entitled to more money. Alternatively, the court could say that there is zero cost and that the developer gets nothing. And so those are risks, high-stake risks in a situation of this type, and you also include the cost of attorney fees and the protracted litigation that could take several years, you know, even five or six years to get through the Supreme Court to the final judgment. So first of all, that's the number one. This history of the pit is not perfect, and it creates great argument for lawyers, but to avoid those costs, we were able to come to a reconciliation that we believe is less than the cost to the property owners that a court would likely find using, applying equity to these principles. Number two is that the Public Improvement District undoubtedly, in its Service and Assessment Plan and in its documents, provided for and expected an interest amount to be applied to the property under circumstances. Those circumstances would require each property owner to pay 6% per year on their allocated district cost. Because the property itself had never been subdivided from the original 283 acres, the original assessment was placed at that level, and it has yet to be reallocated, which is the other part that this pit does. So when interest at 6% per year is adopted in 2004 and then is accrued from 2004 to 2019, when the assessment payments are, for instance, in a, 6% of a 600, or 6,192 assessment of principal for residents is $371 a year, while the annual payment was only 200. And so those payment plans would obligate the individuals so that their pit assessment plus interest, which was something we did not discuss last time, would actually increase the cost on the property, not decrease it from those payments. We resolved that through this pit. And so finding that with that interest, the total of pit costs to date would be roughly $25 million. Finding a middle ground of $11.9 million appears to be an equitable balance that we believe is supportable for purposes of this case. And so this negotiated deal saves the cost of the litigation, saves the time of court, and it does not require, which we believe the council should consider, litigation always to be a last resort, when there is no other way to reconcile, and we have found that. So in short, we thought that using this side-by-side comparison of what the current Service and Assessment Plan currently provides and what the revised Service and Assessment Plan provides is the best, cleanest way to go about this for purposes of tonight. So the current Service and Assessment Plan has one 283-acre tract with an $11.961 million lien that was created in 2003, modified in 2004, which, under the Assessment Plan, gained 6% interest a year from that point. And the revised Service and Assessment Plan breaks down that 283-acre tract into each property shown by the Bastrop County Appraisal District ID number, so everybody knows where they stand. The current Service and Assessment Plan provides that 6% interest for at least 12 years and continues every year until the lien is paid. In the new one, we have a fixed amount that's owed with no future interest obligations. So it stops the insanity with regards to the interest. In addition to that, the liens, with regard to the value, are reset to the original 2003 Public Improvement District cost estimate of $11.9 million. I'm sorry, it was the opinion of probable cost, Mayor. And so, and then we deduct the actual credit, so every property owner is getting credit for every penny that they've applied to this pit since they started paying for it. The liens are allocated to each lot without future interest, so that anyone that wants to pay off their capital improvement costs, they'll know exactly what the number is by looking at the ordinance and the Assessment Plan and are able to pay that off. And we can adopt that every year, so as payments are made, you'll see exactly where you stand. Every property owner in the current Service and Assessment Plan is responsible for the entire $25 million lien because it was placed on the property before it was subdivided and then sold to them. So it still stands in their title history. Here, you have the ability to pay off the lien on an individual lot property without being responsible for the entire pit debt in order to escape those costs. And then finally, the current Assessment Plan had no end date for the pit lien. The amount actually increased over time and would have not ever stopped unless somebody made a principal-type payment, a lump-sum payment to pay off the debt. In the revised Service and Assessment Plan, we've reallocated that through the combination to have one lien, and those dates are established even if those costs, by the time you reach that date, do not retire the amount owed. We have a final payoff. So, bottom line is, under the current Assessment Plan, when you consider principal and interest, residential property owners in the aggregate have an unallocated capital assessment of $7.749 million owed, which, if you break it down by property, it is that they started with $6,000, and they currently, after 14 years or 10 years of payment, they owe $14,000 to $16,000 on a $6,000 mark. Under the new program, that $7.79 goes to $2.1 million. Under that program, the $14,000 to $16,000 goes to $4,180 per lot with no interest accruing in the future to pay that off. For non-residential property owners, their aggregate cost of, you know, unallocated to them, but the proportions that were provided with interest is $13.7 million. Under the new revised Service and Assessment Plan, that $13.7 goes down to $5.2 in capital assessments with no interest allocated in the future. So in total, the current Service and Assessment Plan obligates every property owner to be jointly responsible for the total of $22.5 million. And in the revised Service and Assessment Plan, the pit lien subdivided to each property with a combined total of only $7.3 million. And with that, we believe that the Service and Assessment Plan is properly allocated in accordance with Chapter 372. It's provided those issues. It's adopted for purposes of the land use changes during the development of the project, and we ask that the second reading be approved and adopted as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Hyde? I am going to open the public, officially open the public hearing. The first card I picked up is Carlos Liriano. Mr. Liriano, if you'd like to come forward and speak, please state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Carlos Liriano, Los Pines Toyota. My business is in the pit. Eight oh six Highway 71 West Bastrop, Texas. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I have been, I am here tonight to ask you to vote no for this extension of the pit. You are asking us to pay a maintenance fee all the way to 2040. You're asking every resident, every commercial business, every multifamily facility to pay to 2040. That has not been clear to all the residents. Today, I've met with five residents, and I met with the board, Hunter's Crossing, not with the board, but board members. They are not clear on how long the maintenance is going to last. Some believe that this thing is going to end in 2027. Some think it's going to only be to 2033. None of them told me that they believe that the maintenance is going to extend to 2040. None of them. Okay? My business, I bought my business and I built a nice business, and I've given back to this community. I employ roughly 70 employees over there. We're always thinking about how to make our community better. My business, above the normal property taxes, has paid already $809,000 in additional fees in tax, tax, pit, tax toward this pit. Now, with this extension, my calculation comes to an additional $1.2 million by the time this pit is done in 2040, and there's still no guarantee that it's going to be done in 2040. We just heard some numbers. Twenty-five million. Well, they negotiated down to 11, you know, 11 and a half million. Well, 11 and a half million number was not currently negotiated. That was a known number in 2003. That was a known number. They also stated in this memo here that it was given to the public that they negotiated $1.8, $1,889,000. If you look through the documents in 2003, it states, states that the developer will contribute 20%. Guess what number that is? The same exact number. They're talking about bringing this thing down to $7 million. $7 million was in 2003. Okay? I have attempted to speak to each and every one of you about this issue and how it's going to affect the business, my business and my fellow businesses and the residents out there. I have no legal action filed against the city, but yet, none of y'all are able to speak to me about this. Right? So I went and found the document that the city gave us in 2013. In 2013, the developer wanted more money, and the city said, no. And the residents asked questions. They asked all of these questions. Ms. Carolyn Smith wrote these questions. She was at the pit meeting two weeks ago when I asked y'all to postpone this. She asked these questions. One of the questions is, now, this is 2013, okay? And as of 2010, the city, this Bastrop city knew that the developer had overrun his expenses to $17 million. They haven't, the city has done nothing about that to date, but in 2010, they knew that that amount of money was out there by the developer, you know, expected by the developer. So the city came and addressed these issues. Ken Kestles prepared this memo for the staff. And when I went to Ken Kestles a couple of weeks ago and said, Ken, tell me about this memo, because I remember reading this memo and making my decision on my property, he said, yeah, that was prepared by the city manager and the city attorney. Then I went to Ms. Carolyn. Ms. Carolyn, do you remember these questions? Absolutely. I wrote those questions, and Mike Talbert answered those questions for us. One of the questions is, when does the pit end? And what happens after it ends? Okay? Answer, the pit expires in 2027, 2028, depending on which ordinance you're talking about. Okay? But 2027, before that, the developer will convey all of its various public improvements to the city, and thus, at the time the pit expires, 2027. The ongoing operations of the maintenance of these public improvements will revert to the city and will be paid for and managed in the same manner that other public improvements are handled by the city. In other words, the city's already collecting my taxes to handle these expenses. Now, the city wants to extend this to 2040. I don't believe that's fair. We also heard, we also heard about interest and how interest is going to be applied and how interest is going to be added and what have you. Question, what is the interest rate we as citizens are paying on the debt? Answer, neither the city nor the pit are paying any interest, nor do either hold any debt for the pit. Four Star would be the only party responsible for paying their debt and the associated interest. That's very clear. Very clear. City answers. Another interesting question, if there is debt left at the end of the pit, now remember, 2027, who assumes responsibility for paying the debt? Answer, Four Star is responsible for paying any debt that is left at the end of the pit, Four Star being the developer. So now Four Star sells to another developer, the other developer comes in and says, you guys owe me $17 million. And y'all will hire an attorney, and of course, he says, okay, we owe $17 million. Let's find a way to handle this. Right? The difference is that the city is handling this, which has been a mess from day one, and I've been dealing with it from day one, the city is handling this by putting it, putting this on our back, on my back, on the residents' back, by extending, by extending the maintenance, guess what? You're getting taxes, and now you're getting the maintenance for all of those properties, all of the properties out there. Okay? So this is what the city told me before I went and bought my property. In 2013, 2015, I built my property. I leased my property. I didn't know about the tax. I paid a triple-net lease for three years. So now I go in and I try to buy my property. The pit comes up. The pit comes up. So what, so what do I do? Do I move my building? I can't move my building. So I went to the city. I joined, as a matter of fact, I got on the pit board because no one could tell me anything about the pit, right? So I got on the pit board. I was assured, the residents were assured, everyone was assured, that the pit would end in 2027. So I made a calculation, and I bought my building. Now, the city comes in and says, someone, someone even had the, now the city comes... Now, the city comes, the city council comes back and says, "Oh, this is not real. The city didn't know what they were talking about. Someone actually told me that. Oh, you can't believe, that was just, that was nonsense." I made decisions on this. These answers, and I don't want to bore you with all of them, but I've submitted this, I've submitted this to you. Not one phone call, I've not received one phone call to say, "Hey, Carlos, let's talk about this." I didn't receive one phone call. But it's going to make a $2 million additional tax on my business. So what happens now? So, you know, businesses, you know, everyone says, "Oh, it's only a few dollars for the residents." Here's my problem: What happens if the maintenance expense goes up? The answer is, they are going to reassess a new assessment and pass it on to us, the property owners. That's what's going to happen. So I don't believe that we should have an extension of this PID. Two years ago, they came in and said, "The pond is not deep enough. We have, we're having a flooding problem, and the pond is not deep enough. Solution: We're going to make the pond deeper. Cost: $100,000 or so." Okay? And that has been postponed because the pond has not been, I don't believe is, you know, that that has taken place. But who is going to get the charge for deepening the pond? Us, the property owners. Every resident out there is going to get a new assessment. It's not fair for y'all to take a vote tonight, and some of y'all haven't even read this. This is important. I'm asking you, please postpone this vote. Get the facts. Take a look at a good business in Bastrop County. A good business, there's a good community partner that employs people that I am, I have no option. I have no option. I, I've been asking, and Mayor, I'm, I'm, thank you for your time, but I have just one last thing. I have been asking for my questions to be answered for over almost two years, and they kept telling me, "Wait for the attorney to, to, to come up with the answers. Wait for the attorney to do the research." And I waited, and I waited. And then I came, the attorney finally finished his report, and I came to City Hall and I asked for my, I asked for some answers. I have questions. No answers. Then I contacted every one of y'all. No answers. I go to the PID board. No answers. So then we get some answers, you know, just some answers. Can someone tell me where my money went? Because today, the assessment is higher than the original assessment. Can someone please tell me where my money went? And with that, I thank you for your time, and I please ask you, again, to vote no or at least postpone this vote until you, you can personally take a look at the facts. Because one attorney said, "It's going to end in 2027." Now, another attorney says, "Go to 2040," and this is a great deal. This is not a great deal. We need to figure out which one is right before you make this assessment and put it on our backs. And with that, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Larriano. Adiee Corry, oh, wants Misty to go first.
Mayor, Council, Misty Ventura, 9406 Biscayne Boulevard, Dallas, Texas, 75218. On behalf of the owner of property within the PID and the developer, T.F. Hunter Crossing LP, we are here before you respectfully requesting that you approve this service and assessment plan as presented by your city attorney. We all recognize that in 2003, a former council levied an assessment in lump sum of $11.9 million on all of the property. When that assessment was levied in 2003, it attached to the legal description that was all of the property. Over time, payments have been made reducing that $11.9 million, but the only way any individual owner can get their property released from that assessment lien that attached is to pay it. And the option today, under the 2003 documents, is to pay all of it in lump sum. The action before you gives each owner an opportunity to receive an allocation of that $11.9 million and the option to pay in installments over time. Every owner always has, in 2003 and in today, the opportunity to pay in lump sum. It is unfortunate for this community that, over time, bad information has been distributed about this PID and about the mechanics of how PIDs work under Chapter 372 of the Local Government Code. I've heard time and time again, with my involvement in this property, of a notion of expiration. It's going to end. It's going to expire. Chapter 372 of the Local Government Code tells us that there is no expiration date. There is no expiration date. There's only an opportunity to create a PID and to dissolve a PID. And you dissolve a PID in the same way that you create it, by a majority of owners petitioning the council, a majority by value, and a majority by number of owners. So to the extent the PID owners want the PID dissolved, so they have to pay no future O&M assessments, they have the opportunity to petition. You, however, and the property owners, however, are stuck with the reality of Chapter 372 of the Local Government Code and the reality that PIDs don't expire. So what do we have? We have an assessment that was levied in lump sum. We have an opportunity to allocate that assessment this evening on a parcel-by-parcel basis. We have an opportunity for every owner upon that allocation to pay their allocable share in lump sum or to choose to pay their allocable share in installments over time. And we would respectfully request that, as a property owner and as the developer, that you approve the service and assessment plan that's before you and briefed by your professional team so that all owners have that opportunity. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions? Captain Brennan?
I have one, I have one question. What is the maintenance? I mean, what is the, for the individual and commercial? Is it a flat rate? I've forgotten. We've seen it, but...
The assessment when levied for O&M in 2003 was a lump sum of 4.5 million, 5.4 million. It has been each year allocated based on a budget, so it has varied over time, and my understanding is that it continues to go down. The best practice in PIDs is to levy O&M assessments annually, and I think the city would like to move towards that best practice, but the historical assessment is $5.4 million that's been allocated and reduced over time. George, is that a fair summary?
So yearly, what's that installment?
In, in the past several years, it's been $650 total per, per property owner on the residential, and there's a percentage amount that's calculated for each one of the commercial and multifamily lots now, which has not been provided before. In the service and assessment plan, by property ID number, it is calculated and actually shown for each property, for each, both the capital assessment and the, the maintenance and operation assessment. What's important to, to remind the council today is that the capital assessment or the, for maintenance and operation for this year is no different than last year and the, for all the parties. And with regards to the payment of capital assessment, the capital assessment installment for this year is exactly the same amount that this, that the property owners were paying last year. So it has not accelerated, and it's exactly the same amount, and those payments do not exhaust the capital owed on any property. And so, in the event that there was some concern with regard to that, this year's service and assessment plan does not result in a completion of any capital. It's the same as last year. If you adopted the service and assessment plan for last year, the payments would be the same as it would be this year, except your property, your residential property owners would pay more.
We, Carlos, let me finish going through the speakers that are signed in. So, Misty, one of the things I want to clarify, when we talk about the cap, there's a difference between capital and O&M. And on the capital, depending on how long you've been paying, this, the whole idea of when you're going, once you've paid in, if we adopt the, if council votes and adopts SAP tonight, once you get to that capital amount per residential lot, then you would no longer be paying towards the capital because the capital is paid off, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
So depending on when your house was actually built and when fees started being paid in, that's all been deducting towards what is now in the new assessment, service and assessment fee. It's a defined number. So once you get to, you've paid off that number, then you're done. And just other homes that pay for homeowners association fees or whatever, your operation and maintenance continues because you're using a pool and you have community fences and things of that nature. Is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, that's a, that's a fair summary. The assessment when levied had two parts, a capital component and an O&M component. What's being proposed to you this evening reflects the payments, both of reduction in capital as well as the annual portion of the O&M.
Okay. And the other thing that I believe is that the, I was talking about buckets of money earlier. Those buckets are very much Hunter's Crossing. The, the capital is in its own bucket, the O&M is in its own bucket. And city manager, when, when our chief financial officer, when, when, because sometimes we do move things from a fund to a fund, we do not touch Hunter's Crossing. Those buckets remain whole. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes, ma'am, and as a statutory matter, they're required to be siloed in that way because the condition precedent to the levy was a finding of special benefit and because Hunter's Crossing was benefited by the PID improvements, they're burdened with the assessment.
Okay. So that's not a bucket that blends with everything else?
No, as a statutory matter, it cannot be commingled.
Okay. Council, any questions for Misty? Councilmember Rogers?
Okay, so the capital, the assessment part of it, each residential, commercial, multifamily all has a year. Those are specifically ending if we pass this new one, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, when would the M and O end? Because if they, if they pay off their capital, if I'm a resident and I have a new total with this new one, and I pay that off, but I will have to continue paying the O&M till when?
As a legal matter, that is subject to discretion in this way. Each year, you're obligated, as you're obligated this year, to review an annual update of the service and assessment plan. And as part of that annual update, you review the O&M component. So I could imagine a time when it would end because you choose not to levy it, or alternatively, I could imagine all of the owners within the PID coming to you with a petition that says, "We're respectfully requesting you to dissolve the PID," in which case, upon dissolution, the O&M would end. But under the current service and assessment plan, because the assessments are, because owners are afforded the opportunity, not the obligation, the opportunity to pay in installments through 2040, I would expect the O&M to go through 2040. If everyone chose to pay today, all of the obligations would end today. Does that make sense?
So, so does the O&M have to stay until everybody's paid? Or can, let's say, the Hunter's Crossing get together and petition us to stop the O&M at any time?
They can petition you to stop it at any time. It has to be a petition...
And that hasn't anything to do with the capital payments?
No, because what the statute says, what Chapter 372 of the Local Government Code states, is that a PID, Public Improvement District, is dissolved in the same way it is created upon petition of owners. And there's a test, it's not all the owners, it's at least 50% by number and 50% by value. So if those owners, 50% by number and value, came to you and said, "Please dissolve the PID," and you took action to dissolve the PID, all of the O&M would go away. But what doesn't go away is the obligation to pay for the unreimbursed capital costs. And so, even if the O&M went away, because the PID was dissolved, the levy of the $11.9 million capital assessment was a lien that attached to all of the property and doesn't go away until paid.
I understand that part. But now, even with, let's say, we adopt the new one, they still have that right for the O&M later to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Captain Brennan?
What does the, what does actually the O&M go to?
The operation and maintenance of only the capital improvements that were funded by the PID. So it goes to fund not only the administration of the PID, your professional team and statutory compliance, like bringing an annual update before you as required by Chapter 372, but in addition to that, it goes to fund operation and maintenance expenses, but only of those things that were financed with the PID.
Like the pool, like the fence, the, the community fences, not the pool? Okay, pools, HOA, sorry. That was a bad example. The pools, part of the HOA, that was a bad example.
The budget that the city council passed...
Closer to the mic.
The, the budget that the city council passed for the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation contains the precise items that are there. For instance, the, you have a pumping, a utility pumping well, you have certain hike and bike trails, you have fencing. Those issues that are enhanced benefits that will be, which will be owned by the Local Government Corporation are those that will be maintained. And so, the, even with a petition of dissolution, if that dissolution, it's not, it doesn't actually become effective until all the debts are paid in the, in the PID. And so, that's why the capital continues, and you still have to have people that, that does your assessment role for the capital, make sure those payments get done, and handle that. And so, that's part of the, of the, of those costs.
Are you saying that the O&M continues until the capital's paid?
That, well, if, if you don't have an operation of maintenance, you have no funds by which to operate the Local Government Corporation to prepare, to fix the fencing and to, and pipe the water and pay for the well pump and electricity. And so, you would have that issue to resolve, whether you transfer those, those assets under our agreement with the homeowners association, or whether you transfer those assets to become city assets and pay with it with tax dollar. Those would be a determination of council at the time of the petition.
Okay, thank you, Misty. I have one other person signed up to speak...
Excuse me, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got a question for you. Young lady there, can't remember your name. As my understanding it, you are representing the developers.
Yes, sir. T.F. Hunter's Crossing is both the developer and the owner of the 37 acres of undeveloped land within the PID. So they're both developing and seeking reimbursement for the infrastructure they funded and paying as an owner within the PID the assessments.
I apologize, Captain Pearson, I didn't see your light, so... Adiee Corry? Did I say your last name correctly?
As he steps up, the other point I'd just like to point out is $2.8 million of that $7.3 is an assessment that is currently assessed on T.F. Hunter's 37 acres of undeveloped property, and they are also a PID payee for all of the maintenance and operation as well. So they're not just the developer, they own 30, almost 38 acres in the PID and are obligated to pay about a third of that cost.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, city manager. My name is Adiee Corry. My address is 15409 Berry Drive in Lakeway, Texas, 78734, and I'm here representing T.F. Hunter's Crossing. Just two very quick things for you, and then I'm happy to answer questions. We can't speak, I can't speak to what happened in the past. You know, we purchased this property in February of 2018. We recognized when we came in that this district had issues, and the approach that we've been... And the approach that we've been trying to take over the last year and a half is to partner with the stakeholders to figure out how do we solve the issues? And I just want to commend the staff and the consultants that you all have been having worked with us for the effort and the energy that's gone into getting us to where we are today. It has taken a lot of effort to get here. The second thing is there is no perfect solution to this. It's understandable that some folks are upset. I can, I can assure you, my bosses aren't necessarily happy with where we are today. Okay, there's a lot of things that have been given up over the last year and a half to get us to where we are today. And I, I don't want to lose sight of that as you're considering that, this vote tonight. There has been a lot of concessions, and because we're here in agreement, does not necessarily mean if this passes, we're all giving each other a high five, saying, "Wait, great job, we did it." There's, there's still some consternation, even today, up to the very last minute, trying to get these things finalized so that we could get agreement with everybody and try to get the, the issues resolved. So we respectfully request that you move forward and pass this, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Any questions from, Councilmember Rogers?
Well, Misty?
Mm-hmm.
Said that you own a certain amount of land that hasn't been developed yet?
Yes, ma'am.
And you'll be paying into the pit? So when that parcel gets developed, the new owners of that parcel will continue paying into the pit?
Yes, ma'am.
So even if you sell it, somebody else will?
Somebody will be paying, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I was just making sure of that.
Yes.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Rogers, and for clarity, and I'm making up numbers, and it's 38 acres, I think you guys said you own about, let's call it 38 acres, and we'll just say that your assessment is, I'm totally making up, $380,000. If you pay on it for two or three years and then you sell it, then the assessment that the new owner would own would be 380 less whatever you guys paid into it.
That is correct.
And then they would pick it up. And that is a number that would exist with the new service and assessment plan that today, they would not be able to know what that number is. Is that a correct? Okay. So, because part of the problem, it has been a disaster and not, I don't think anybody's, to your point, nobody's been really happy with what has happened from the day that it was originally formed to the day that we got here today. But some of the uncertainty has been part of the issue, so the, once, if this new service and assessment plan is approved, then now there's a definitive number, regardless of who owns the property.
Correct.
Because in the past, the developer wasn't paying in, and that was part of why the debt had continued. But all, that's part of what was squared up. And at this point, whether it's you, whether it's the next developer, whether it's the next owner, there is a defined amount that each property owner has to pay in towards their lien, towards the capital. Misty, am I stating that correctly? Okay. Councilmember Ennis?
I think I know the, this question, but I want to clarify while we're talking about this. Who sets the rate for the O and M? Us?
I think that, um, the Hunter's Crossing Board.
Or is it set in the contract?
The Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation is the one who sets the budget, identifies the needs of the community, and then presents that for your approval.
Okay, thank you.
So they would, they are controlling their own destiny? So they can have like a, "We want to replace all the fences," or "We don't want to replace the fences," or whatever, but they would, they, the people who live there come up with a plan and bring a budget to the city that says, "We're going to do this assessment and do these things with that money."
Correct. And the one, one of the things for this year is to develop the standard for fencing in the community and any other items, and redo that. So that's just an example.
I don't want to go down that rabbit trail. So, Carlos, this is against normal public hearing, but you did have a question, and I want to allow you an opportunity, but I am going to ask you to be respectful of time.
Thank you. I have paid as much as $55,000 for maintenance. The only reason it's gone down is because Mike Talbert finally took control of the expenses. Prior to that, the developer was doing the maintenance. He took control of it and brought the expenses down. But I have had as much as $55,000 in maintenance in one year.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if, if the expenses go up, the assessment goes up. Thank you.
Thank you. The one question that I have that I believe I know the answer to, because we can all agree, the past has not been awesome, how can we know that the future is going to be awesome? The future, we're not going to be having this conversation again in five years or 10 years. What is going to be different in the next year if we approve this service and assessment plan that did not exist in the past year?
For the first time, you have consultants that are creating a consistent practice in your O and M so that you can use this as your template that provides transparency to your public as to what they owe, what, what that total is, and that the total is not going to be based on a 6% buried of interest rate, that they can rely on those numbers because they're passed by the city council. The transparency of this document does not require math.
I was looking for a different answer, so I'm, I'm going, city manager, are we, is the Hunter's Crossing Board contracting with someone? Is there going to be something in place that is not in place now?
Yes, we are going to continue to retain the forensic auditor. There is also another company that will be employed that manages pit, pits. So to George's point, every year, it will be evaluated according to what the law requires, it will be updated on an annual basis, it will be maintained on an annual basis, and we will not get behind it. So what we have is a very strong foundation, and every year, we will maintain best practices so that we don't get here again.
Because historically, we have not had somebody in place watching just the pit?
Once, should council adopt the amended and restated service plan, it is the first time since its creation it will have been amended.
And it's supposed to be reviewed annually?
Yes, ma'am. No, no longer than, no more than five years, but it is recommended that you do it annually, and we've never done it.
I have one more question, I'm sorry.
Yes.
One question, okay, so now, I mean, we started with this pit agreement in 2003, correct? And now we're coming 2019 and trying to do a whole nother pit agreement, is that right? Or revise it, whichever. I just, is, to answer a question that we're not going to come five years from now and try to come up with a new pit agreement, is that, that won't happen, is that what you're saying? For the capital part, not for the M and O?
Yeah, the, the, yeah, I, I can't make any guarantees or, or what are on that regard, but the, the pit that was created is being restated because of the lack of annual service and assessment plans. Each year, you have the ability to review that service and assessment plan and renew it for five more years. So for instance, if you have a catastrophe that requires significant enhancement, or you develop, you decide you want to put something really special in the, in the district, you can amend the service and assessment plan with the, in, in order to handle that assessment. Otherwise, you can keep it at zero.
Okay, we want to hear Misty's answers, too.
I'm, I'm going to slightly disagree with George, even though I hate to do that. This pit was created on petition of the property owner, and that pit petition is jurisdictional. So even though the pit exists, and even if in your heart of hearts you wanted to levy additional capital assessments, your jurisdictional limit to that is in that pit petition, which was about $14 million, of which you've used up $11.9 million. So for all the property owners out there, I'm, I'm going to have to just respectfully say, you don't have a whole lot of authority to levy additional capital assessments.
And that's good, I want to make sure.
It's not a blank check.
That was letting them know that they can't levy more.
It would be a new pit, essentially.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's appreciated. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, she's got a question, maybe it's rattling around in my empty head here. Now, Four Star had the development at first, and they sold to whom?
Sabine.
Sabine.
Development was the first.
Sabine was first.
Sabine was first.
Sabine was first, then Four Star came in.
And then Four Star bought Sabine.
Okay, now, did the, all the assessments, all the fees went up after Four Star came in and took over the property? And I guess my question is, if it's got sale again, will the new property owner, like prices on everything go up again?
No, in the, in the beginning of the pit, the pit was-
George, let's keep this simple. No, sir. Part of what you're going to adopt in the next item is all of the property in the pit will be allocated finally. So the HOA will get its pieces, condo part will get its pieces, the city will get some of that. So a lot of the ambiguity that has existed about who gets what, who's in charge, that's never been able to be addressed, is going to be fixed when you adopt N and B.
Okay, is that going to help the property owners?
I'm sorry?
Is that going to help the property owners?
It will because there will be clarity in who's in charge. And part of the challenge that, that has existed in maintaining the pit is who owns the property? Is it the HOA, is it the LGC? And this, this, this provides huge clarity. So with the, the 30 acres or 38 acres that the developer owns, every, every parcel is now accounted for, every parcel has been allocated, and, and that's been part of the challenge going forward. And all of that gets addressed through this process.
Okay, I'd love to see the document that Mr. Liriano has, that was signed by the manager and the attorney at the time, just to take a look to see if it was signed.
I don't think it was signed.
It's not signed.
Yeah, Councilmember Peterson, it's not signed, and Mr. Liriano sent that to us in an email as an attachment. So I, I'm sure Mr. Liriano will send it to you, but I would be willing to send it to you as well.
Okay, thank you.
And a few of the comments are absolutely contrary to state law. There is no extension or retraction of a pit. Pits live until the petition dissolves them. You know, last month, I had to do a zero assessment pit because they have no, no costs, but it's still there, and we have to do the service and assessment plan every year that says zero, until, until those property owners want to dissolve it.
Okay, there is no one else signed up to speak, so I am officially closing the public hearing. And counsel, you have before you the second reading of the ordinance 2019-40.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
One second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion or question? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
I abstain.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
The vote passes three to zero to two in extensions. We are moving on to item 9B. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-86 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving an amended and restated Public Improvement District Development and Reimbursement Agreement for the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District as attached in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Hyde?
Give me one moment to switch gears here. Well, I'm having a technical difficulty.
Okay, on February 2004, the Public Improvement District Development and Reimbursement Agreement was entered into between the city and Sabine Investment Company to administer the developments improvements and provide accountability for reimbursement of costs related to those improvements, as provided in the service and assessment plan. The original agreement provided obligations of the parties related to the management of the construction of the improvements and the manner in which costs were to be determined and property was to be transferred upon completion of the improvements. The agreement was based on projections and estimates, which over the past 15 years have since been modified and realized with final and complete infrastructure improvement, with the exception of the completion of Bear Hunter Drive. The amended and restated agreement updates and acknowledges the total expenditures for the improvements, the total amount of reimbursement paid to date, and the total remaining due pursuant to the updated and amended service and assessment plan just adopted. It acknowledges that the city is not obligated to pay any amount, but receives certain real property owed to it from the developer, and updates that language to current standards related to the discretionary authority of the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District to issue pit reserve, revenue bonds independent of the city to fund the remaining reimbursements owed to the developer pursuant to the original agreement, and reduces that amount as provided for to allow the developer's reimbursement to, to pay any burden on interest or other issuance costs associated with such debt issuance rather than the property owners. It recognizes and accounts for changes in use of the property in the Public Improvement District between 2003 and 2019. It includes an indemnity agreement obligating the developer to pay defense costs and damages should the city or the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation be sued in connection with the operation of the district, provides for a $100,000 reimbursement of reconciliation costs expended to amend and restate the district to the city, provides for the closing documentation to illustrate the full payment of reimbursements, provides for the estimated engineering and construction costs for the remaining improvement and a construction schedule, it provides for the transfer of all real property to the city referred to as the fire station lot adjacent to the pool lot, it provides for park, trail, and other improvement easements to be transferred to the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation, it provides for the condominium regime to be established, allowing the Hunter's Crossing Homeowners Association to acquire, manage, and maintain the pool facility, but otherwise retain the park and parking areas surrounding the pool facility in the name of the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation. We ask for approval.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Hyde?
So this is, this is the document that makes all the different properties assigned to the different places, who owns what, what, when, where, how. So now the fences can be fixed, or the things, maintenance can be picked up because now we know who owns it, is that my understanding of how all this works?
As opposed to one 283 acre tract?
Yes, ma'am.
Which is what currently exists?
Okay, I just want to make sure that's-
This fires all those outstanding questions.
All that legal words, I wanted to make sure I got it down to the-
All of the loose ends are trying to be picked up in this document.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers, a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes, and we can have Mayor Protim Nelson come back in. Thank you very much.
I want to thank the council, and also ask, if there's nothing further, may I be excused?
Yes, you may be excused. Thank you, Misty, thank you, Adee. Yeah, it's 9:04, we're going to take a five-minute break. 9:04, we're in recess. of council chambers. All right, since we're on page four, I'm, we're just going to go ahead with individual consideration items. I'm on item 9D. Hold a public hearing and consider action to approve resolution number R 2019-96 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, granting historic landmark status for Building Block 11 Northeast 1 Quarter Subdivision Lot 1, also known as 909 Farm Street, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as attached in Exhibit A, providing for findings of fact and providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. The request before we tonight is to designate 909 Farm Street as a local historic landmark. The property history for the site, the main house at 909 was built, or 909 was built in 1909, and they have a detached carriage house that was built around 1930. The structure was originally situated in the middle of what is now 909 and 911 Farm Street, and it was in 2014 moved over to what is now 909 Farm, and the additions over the years that have been added on were removed back to the original footprint. In your packet, there's an extensive property history that was provided by the owner.
Very interesting property history.
Yes, so here's the location, it's in the middle of the block there on Farm Street. Process for designation is that the property owner has to be notified, even though they applied for it with new state law requirements. Our own code requires us to notify the property owners within 200 feet of the property. There was a public hearing at the Historic Landmark Commission where the commission made a recommendation to support this to council for consideration. And then council has to consider this as a public hearing. Upon designation, the property owner will have to come in and sign an agreement that they're going to maintain the property, and then they'll be given- they're going to maintain the property, and then they'll be given a plaque, and also designated on the city resource map, and also recorded at the county clerk, so it can pull up in a title search. The criteria for the historic landmarks is that the structure or a site must meet at least two of these criteria. For the main structure, they met items A through E, and the carriage house meets items A through D. And the Historic Landmark Commission voted at their last meeting to recommend this by a vote of six to zero. Any questions?
Excellent. Ms. Bills? Any questions for Ms. Bills before I open the public hearing? I'm officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
I'm officially closing the public hearing. Is there any discussion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protim Nelson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to mention the fact that if anybody knows the former, he's now deceased, Bobby Jenkins, Bobby and Stephanie here in town, and Will Jenkins, and Robert Jenkins, this is their families. One of their family members.
Any other comments or discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. We have now officially completed page four. So, we are gonna go back to page two because Chief Nagy is chomping at the bit, and we are gonna be on 5A, review noise, light, and odor as a nuisance in preparation for adopting the Bastrop Building Block Codes. Chief Nagy?
That's right. We're also gonna go over some other ordinances as well. So, good evening, mayor, city council, city manager, and assistant city managers. Tonight I want to showcase, oop, forgot. Tonight I want to showcase variousity codes and ordinances that affect our citizen's safety, our community values, and of course, our well-being. I want to review the importance of these nuisance ordinances, provide a brief overview of how the Bastrop Police Department handles these ordinances, and finally suggest some updates. You're gonna see as I move forward, on the bottom of the page, I may recommend change or no change to each particular ordinance. Lastly, I've really tried to abbreviate each particular ordinance, really just for simplicity and so we can keep this program moving. Otherwise, we'd be here very late. All right. There you go.
At 9:14, we're very happy to hear that.
There you go. So, why do we care? From my perspective, our mission is to reduce crime. There's a theory called the broken windows theory that suggests that if a neighborhood in disrepair invites crime, and it also, if it's not fixed, then further disrepair may come to it. It states that certain nuisance violations may lower your property values, enforcement licenses our citizens healthy, it reduces stress and improves quality of life, enforcement invites commerce and travelers, and also creates a sense of pride in our community. So, overall, all that together helps us meet our mission of reducing crime. So, how we enforce these nuisances? First, we want to educate. If education doesn't work, we'll ID the violation and then investigate. We could be investigating tall weeds and grass to something much more significant, such as a swimming pool without a fence or without a border. Then, we're gonna ask for voluntary compliance. In the state, in the example of a swimming pool, we might ask for immediate compliance. If that doesn't work, we might move to abatement or even a court process. The ultimate goal is to have these violations fixed as soon as possible. So, moving on to the ordinances. First, junk. Is any stagnant or unwholesome matter, this could be garbage, pallets, lumber, or piled-up trash that intends to add to blight to the area? I don't recommend a change to this ordinance. Weeds and grass can't grow above 12 inches, or it can't create an unsightly or unsanitary condition. For example, we don't want to invite rodents, snakes, or diseased car and mosquitoes. I don't recommend a change. Junk vehicles, just like the regular junk I cited before, it is detrimental to the safety and welfare of the public, it tends to reduce the value of our private property, it could invite vandalism, and it could also create a fire hazard. I don't recommend a change. Litter, I think everyone knows what litter is, I don't recommend a change to a particular part of the ordinance. Swimming pools. Swimming pools must be safe, they must be sanitary, without danger to the public, safety, health, or welfare, and must also maintain proper structural enclosures around them. I don't recommend a change. Vendors, peddlers, and solicitors, all of these must have valid permits. Currently, they may only operate between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. seven days a week. I think we should consider change from 8:00 a.m. to later than 8:00 p.m. for special events only. Some good examples might be the patriotic festival that runs till about 10:00, or maybe our Christmas parade that runs till after 8:00 p.m.
Okay, Chief Nagy, I'm gonna interrupt you. Is it better to change the rule for every day of the year, or to have exceptions for those particular events?
I believe it's best to have exceptions for those particular events.
And so, is that the recommended change, that we change that time on particular days?
I think we should, but the problem might be if we have a new event that comes on board, that might also last past 8:00 p.m., so we'd consider that as well.
So, is there a way that that's reviewed as a part of the event permit process or something?
I think we can make that, yes.
Okay, council, do you have... Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
So, nuisance animal, these are animals that are reasonably noisy, humans, they may endanger the life or health of other persons or property. Oftentimes, they might be dangerous or vicious, or often they can make excessive noise, and this is just an example of barking. I don't recommend a change. Hazardous materials, I think we should just follow Texas Commission on Environmental Quality's Law and Regulations. Filmmaking, this outlines our guidelines regarding commercial filming within the city. I don't recommend a change. Firearms discharge. Texas state law regulates this pretty well. Our ordinance adds some additional restrictions that go from BB guns to pellet guns to even bows and arrows. I don't recommend a change. Vehicle towing, the proper and safe functioning of a towing business is critical, particularly when it comes to vehicles that are on our city roadways. In general, this part of the ordinance applies to policing. It won't provide, so if someone says example fees, we do our fees ahead of time, to any time maybe someone is arrested, that's called a non-consent tow, or if it's towed off of public property, that might be an example as well. It's also regulated by the Department of Licensing and Regulation. I don't necessarily recommend a change, but I think a fee study is probably gonna be due in a couple of years. Our curfew, currently, it's 11:00 p.m. on Sunday and any weekday until one-half hour before sunrise, and then 12:01 a.m. until one-half hour before sunrise on Friday and Saturday, and then also during school hours. I think we should consider change on legions to 5:00 a.m. rather than a one-half hour before sunrise, and what that will do is that will allow officers, basically, 5:00 a.m. is the cutoff, rather than us have to calculate exactly what time sunrise is on a particular day during a particular part of the year.
I think that's a great idea. Councilmember Rogers?
Chief Nagy, is this for every citizen in the city or just kids?
It's gonna be mainly just for the kids, yes. This will be our juvenile curfew ordinance.
If our mayor wants to go out running at 4:00 in the morning?
Yes, of course.
Very dark.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, you're talking an age limit, I'm sorry, sir?
No, age, yes, an age limit, yes.
So, it's like an 18 or under 18?
It is under 18, yes.
The other thing that the 5:00 a.m. will do is we do have some fast-food restaurants that open up early, and this will just make it easy for them to do it and not have to prove their work where they're going, and it just...
That's correct.
Just cleans it up for everybody, right?
That's correct, yes.
So, is anybody opposed to changing it to 5:00 a.m.? Okay.
And when I said 5:00 a.m., I was just giving a suggestion. I think that's most reasonable.
That's as good as anything else.
Okay. So, moving on to our lighting ordinance, I actually really struggled with this. I reviewed quite a bit of ordinances from around the state, particularly some dark-sky ordinances. They all really mentioned public safety, they're important because of public safety, wildlife, energy and climate change, and lastly, historic preservation and the quality of life. There are some definitions that are gonna be important. You have luminous as a unit of measure used to qualify the amount of light produced by a particular fixture or bulb, and a light trespass, this is light that falls behind a property, it's intended to illuminate. So, if you have light on your side of the property that you don't want, that is actually trespass of that light. And then lastly, I learned that glare is probably the most important thing, because this is the light entering the eye that actually causes you discomfort, and then it also can be blinding and reduces our night vision. Now, it might be directly from a particular bulb, or it could be bouncing off of some other surface. I found it best to illustrate what I was trying to accomplish with our lighting ordinance, and you'll see in the left-hand graphic, we've got very bad light, this is light that shines almost in at 360 degrees. It goes from bad to better, so better is less than 90 degrees, where all the light has to shine basically below the 90 degrees, and then we even have a best that really kind of makes that light circle around you. And then, as you see, still on the left-hand side graphic, as you move above, you'll see the night sky. So, the very bad kind of gives you glare in the night sky, and as you move from bad, better, to best, you can see the stars a little bit easier. Second of all, the left graphic shows how we can waste energy in glare even with good light, so that's a badly aimed 500-watt floodlight, you can barely see the person down there, it's not really helping them, so it's not really all that much good light in that particular graphic, and some of that light is actually going into the neighbors, and you can see they're not too happy about it. Now, in the bottom portion there, that's a well-aimed 100% watt floodlight, so we're saving energy, we're giving better light, we're not lighting up the night sky, and we're not bothering our neighbors. I tried to consider some offenses, and the first is light trespass, and this is any technical measure over zero at all locations past three feet on a perimeter. The zero seems to be what the sample ordinance is saying, but I think that might be negotiable. So, what I have here is I wanted to pass this around, this is actually a light meter, and I'm gonna turn it on. And that's how we're gonna try and measure that. So, what this says is it can't be over zero, and we have to be at least three feet over all particular property, so that could be a violation. I'm gonna suggest that light should not be allowed to shine past 90 degrees, as we kind of discussed before. So, you can see on the left-hand side, that's actually, that would be considered a violation because it's actually moving outside that 90 degrees, it's a lot of wasted energy and a lot of wasted light, and then it moves to the right side where it's all facing down below that 90 degrees, and you can kind of see how that actually just looks much better. So, it's more economical, it looks better, and it actually doesn't have the glare, so you can see if there's some sort of perpetrator or something like that, it's actually much easier. And then lastly, it'd be a violation to emit light on the property of another, unreasonably interfering with them. And this might be an example if you maybe have some sort of directed light, so it's gonna be difficult for me to measure a light that's, you know, any higher than myself along that three-foot line, but if they're shining light directly in a window, you could automatically just say this isn't gonna work out.
Chief, question on the last line?
Yes.
Is ruptured to public safety, I mean, wouldn't it be easier for drop-by patrol so they won't be blinded by that glare? Is this something recommended from a police officer?
So, that's why glare is so important. Glare is really important. First, like we said, it can blind you particularly at night, but glare also distorts colors. So, if someone is gonna be wearing a green shirt, I could mistake that for possibly a blue shirt. But if you have proper lighting on your buildings, they're lighting a proper area with the proper wattage and proper lumens, I should be able to see you pretty easily, and then I also will cover up any shadows and of course, that glare. So, we're moving on to odor, unsanitary conditions. Basically, what I'm saying is unsanitary, unhealthy, or contaminated condition that doesn't have any noxious odor, we may rely on the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Laws and Regulations. I don't recommend a change to this portion. So, what I wanted to do, I wanted to see if there was a way we could actually detect odor and apply a number to odor. I found it actually pretty difficult to do. There's actually odor meters, each one is $2,200, and it would require at least two because they detect two different things that as a police department or as a code enforcement officer, I would want to detect. It's also not very easy at measuring. Basically, what I'd have to do is I'd have to take a bag, I'd have to grab a sample of the air, I have to close the bag, insert the meter in the nozzle, it sucks out there, and then it goes ahead and gives me a number. Well, I think we probably, as far as I can see, the first city that would actually use those, and then we don't have, it's still subjective because we don't have a number, so we could set a number that would be subjective, and that would be fair across the board, but I just don't think that's gonna work out quite for us right now. NASA has one, if we want to buy it for $55,000, it'll tell us everything we want to know. Move on to odor, animal litter, and carcasses. Pretty much, we just don't want it around. There we go. We need to consider adding definitions of noxious and odor to this particular part, and then maybe update the language to state unreasonable, noxious, strong, or unpleasant odor that causes stress or discomfort to a person of reasonable ordinary sensibilities. That seems to be the going rate when they're talking about this through other ordinances. And then we should also declare just certain odors from chemicals, stagnant pools, refuse or litter, just violations in themselves, almost kind of going back to the junk ordinance we talked about. Taking that into account, odor is subjective, and we want to use common sense when using and enforcing that. So, noise level? Noise level that we'll go, I'll pass around. I expect it probably at about 50 to 60 right now. Currently, our residential and our non-residential is at 85 during the day and 80 at night. The right graphic kind of shows where we're at on those, so of course, it starts out as a minimum of zero, and it moves all the way up to shotgun fireworks that range from about 140 to about 150.
I have a question about this, because you're saying a lawnmower is 90, so if you mow the lawn, you're violating the daytime ordinance?
I am, yes. In theory, yes.
Please don't tell my husband that, he'll never mow again.
The ordinance is measured from the property line of somebody else, so if I'm making 85 on my particular property, it's gotta be 85 on their particular property line to really be in violation. And I think we use common sense on that as well.
But, Chief, it's not measured at the point that the sound is being generated from, it's measured from the point that somebody is complaining.
Yes, along their property line.
But the sound so obviously there's going to be some displacement of the sound.
That's correct, yes. So, damage occurs just about at any time from 84 to 85 decibels. Now, that is really right at the ear. So, it's also, going back just to property line, it also has to be right at the ear for it to really do any true damage. So, this is an example of us taking noise, and you'll see, so we're gonna be at the Old Yellow Store, right on Pecan Street. This is gonna be about midday, and we're gonna be hovering about 56 to, I think we might get up to just about 60 as we move towards Chestnut Street. And what you really hear is you really hear the cars go by, there might be some, a little bit of work over at the car, at the thing, and they're rated at about 53 there. So, for consideration, the residential property, rather than two, I mean, to lower it by 10 decibels day and night, and that will be the 75 versus 65, and that's pretty consistent with the other ordinances. We also might want to consider animals such as barking dogs and other animals to this particular section. There's also a good fallback that Texas state law referenced disorderly conduct. It states it's unlawful to make any unreasonable noise in a public place if the noise is above 85 decibels and you've been warned by a peace officer. That's a violation. We should also consider an exemption, exception for the noon whistle. Currently, noon whistle varies from zero to about 120 decibels within about seven seconds. Now, this is gonna be within about 20 feet of the noon whistle, and I think the exception might mirror a train horn.
Thank you.
Noise from autos, this is gonna be basically a type of muffler, or it's in such disrepair it's just causing a bunch of noise going down the road. I don't recommend any changes. And this is, noise from autos, again, this is the AKA base from the, yes, there you go, base from the cars. It's pretty self-explanatory, this can't be heard from 35 a week, 35 feet away from the vehicle, and that's a violation. I thought we might consider adding discomfort or injury to a person of ordinary sensibilities to this portion as well. Community values, how we treat our animals, any residence must be adequate for the number and type of animals kept, it must be sufficient size, of course, and it must be continuously maintained and sanitary. I don't recommend any changes. Kinnels and the sale of animals, permits shall be required for all multiple pet owners, multiple pet owners is six and above, or I'm sorry, seven and above, you can have six, and animal breeders shall be issued a private breeder permit, and no recommend changes.
So, is the private breeder permit on our master fee schedule?
I don't know, but it is mandated by state law. It was interesting what we learned about this. It's a state law, it deals with private breeders, and there's a process that they have to go through.
Well, if it's not on the master fee schedule, y'all can bring it back and amend it, but the auto...
Well, on the sale of animals, one time a year is permitted without, well, it's allowed without a permit, so that means the people who go to the Walmart parking lot and open up the back of their truck.
Yes, and I was, and maybe Chief Altgut might help me out, I was under the impression that if it's free, if they're giving away free animals, or if, let's say, free puppies, it's okay, but they actually need a permit to sell those animals in public. Now, I may be wrong, I'll have to research that. I'll get back to you.
It says one time a year.
Okay.
I would say that if they're doing it at your house, that's one thing.
Gotta get to a mic.
Try it.
If you're doing it from your house, I think you're covered on the one thing. We'll check with legal.
If you're selling it out of the Walmart parking lot, I think you're a vendor and you're no different than, than, um, somebody that's selling vacuum cleaners or anything else, in my opinion. But we can check with, with, uh, with our city prosecutor to make sure that she's of the same opinion.
Can we see that occur quite, quite often? That city?
Yes, we do.
At ATV and at Walmart and all like it? And don't know the condition of the animals and?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, I had a question on, on the sound, and I'm sorry, let's make it go back. When you're saying day and night, do you guys have certain hours that you consider daytime, nighttime? Like you can play your radio outside at a certain level, and at ten o'clock you have to turn it off?
It's pretty vague. It really does. It says daytime and nighttime. And, I mean, of, of course, that's defined, now it changes throughout the year.
I'm, I'm sorry. On our previous workshops, we had talked about changing the definition of daytime and nighttime to coincide with other laws. And so under the Texas Transportation Code and the Hunter's Code, uh, daytime is one half hour before sunrise to one half hour after sunset, and then nighttime is one half hour after sunset to one half hour prior to sunrise. And so we would, we, we would utilize that for the, for the sound ordinance also.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say people aren't complaining at six o'clock at night. The calls are coming in at midnight at eleven. That's when somebody's mad, when it's ten-thirty, eleven o'clock.
Yes, and typically on weekends.
I was trying to figure out when to make Jacob come in with his radio. It's what I was trying to do. You know? How late can he stay out with that radio? So, that's all.
And in general, it's gonna be, if there's a violating house, it's consistent with that violating house. Very rarely do we have just kind of random houses. It's, it's gonna be a consistent nature. So loitering and camping. Loitering is prohibited, and this is, uh, when a person is deemed to be loitering, if the person is sitting, lying down, sleeping, or stealing personal belongings in a public area, and if they've been asked by a peace officer or the owner of that particular property to move, then be, and they don't move, they're gonna be in violation. And in camping, use of a public area for living accommodations. I don't recommend any changes. Sexually oriented, uh, businesses. This, uh, outlines those businesses as any type of adult service, adult entertainment, bookstore, or adult lounge. And it talks about the locations of these sexually oriented businesses, and it's pretty comprehensive, so I don't recommend a change.
I guess it's more my concern is any adult service business, would it not a, a bar be an adult service? I mean, it's. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, it does, an adult service, it only services adults there, certainly not for.
Yes, I can see how it might be a bit ambiguous, yes. Uh, and that might be something that we could consider, but we're, it's really kind of un-
These issues are being forwarded to the city attorney's office after tonight's city council meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
Our special events, uh, these guy, uh, these are just outlines, our guidelines regarding our special events. They're pretty comprehensive. I don't recommend any changes. And finally, any questions or comments?
My comment is that you have done an excellent job. Your presentation was complete and thorough, and you've done a great job explaining it.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Brenner?
Uh, great job. I just have one little question. In, when we went through nuisances six months ago, or whenever it was, we talked about, uh, we included church bells. Has that been taken out?
No, it has not. Or I might not be, I, I might, I wasn't privileged to the conversation, so I might not be giving you a correct answer.
I think he's saying like the exception, like the whistle, an exception for the church bells. Is that what you're looking for, Councilmember Brenner?
Noon whistle and church bells.
It remains an exception, yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Nelson, I think you had your light on. Anybody else? Oh, get your, get your toy back.
There you go. All right. Thank you very much.
Excellent job, Chief.
We did notice you never went over sixty decibels during your presentation.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
Good job, good job.
The chief did, though.
All right, we're moving on to staff reports because we've already done five B, six A, receive monthly development update. Mr. Jones. What did he say?
Time's up. I'll try to be brief. Um, so again, our monthly development meeting, mission and purpose, uh, for the purpose of those viewing at home or the packet online. Uh, this is our matrix for the month. We had a hundred and thirty-nine counter visits, issued a hundred permits, and had eighty-seven permit applications in. Uh, we had eight pre-application meetings and then two pre-development meetings.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How can you, just for clarity, you, you issued more permits than you've got applications?
Yeah, so some of those have a lag time, for example, so it-
That way whoever's looking at it.
They're being reviewed, yeah. So it depends on the permit, but that can, it, sometimes it'll be more, sometimes it'll be less, depends on the, the type of permit. Uh, new CEOs that we issued this month, uh, we have Base Camp Deli at Seven-Eleven Pine Street. Uh, the James Avery, uh, was issued a certificate of occupancy, um, seven forty-seven Highway Seventy-One, Unit B One Hundred, and then the Bastrop Montessori School at nine oh seven Chestnut, just down the street. Uh, ongoing commercial projects, uh, since this PowerPoint was, uh, completed, uh, Stemmonstone was actually issued a certificate of occupancy, so they have, uh, now have that, and should be opening sometime in the near future. They now have their now hiring banner out front, so, uh, look for them to open in the near future. Uh, Seaton Hospital, again, I think this has now moved to a November completion date, uh, but they're moving along with interior and exterior work. Uh, three sixty-five Mini Storage, if you've driven by there, there's a lot more, uh, activity. Uh, they're actually going vertical and making good progress and still on, on, online to, uh, complete in December of twenty nineteen. And then the Lost Pines Professional Building, they're about wrapped up, um, and looking to open in September of twenty nineteen. It's probably gonna push into October. Uh, residential product, uh, projects, we actually, uh, had a couple of new sections at Pecan Park, Section Three D and Three E, uh, sixty-seven new lots, uh, for a total of two hundred and eighty-two in Pecan Park. Uh, no change to Piney Creek Bend or the Preserve at Hunter's Crossing. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Great job, Mr. Jones. Any questions, counsel?
Thank you.
Set the new bar, moving right along. Six B, receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending August thirty-first. Ms. Waldron.
Yes, good evening. So this report is over, um, period ending August, and, um, we do have a few warnings on water and electric funds, so go over those. The economic indicators are provided for your review. This is, uh, eleven months out of twelve, so we're, we're almost there to the end of the year. Revenues, I wanted to point out, it's the same, uh, funds, impact fees in cemetery are actually is running, uh, behind of our forecast. The other two are just slight warnings on water revenue and electric revenue. On the expense side, um, I have a note on the cemetery, uh, budget amendment will be coming on the October eighth to, um, appropriate the land that council, uh, approved purchase of, but we need to go ahead and, and that will correct this report when we have that budget amendment approved on the cemetery fund. General fund is still looking good holistically, four and a half percent above forecast. Sales tax is about two and a half percent over forecast. Property tax is almost break even. Water wastewater fund is a positive one percent on their revenue side. They are running, um, just slightly below forecast. Uh, electric, um, net positive three, a little over three percent on their revenue side. They are running a little below forecast on the revenue side as well. Hot tax fund is a positive almost ten percent, um, in total. Their revenue is six percent over forecast. Year-to-date, they're about thirty-three percent below where we were last year, year-to-date. We go with these summary, any questions I can address?
You said thirty-three percent, you mean thirty-three thousand?
Thirty-three thousand, sorry. That would be bad.
Good job. The consistent charts really help a lot. Any comments or questions for Ms. Waldron? Excellent, excellent. All right, counsel, we have page five left, and we have about seven items if I counted correctly. I'm on the top of page five, nine G. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty nineteen dash thirty-eight of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting a budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, October first, twenty nineteen, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty, attached as Exhibit A, providing for expenditures for said fiscal year be made in accordance with said budget, providing a severability clause establishing an effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, and so in the staff report, I did note, uh, a few changes that occurred between the first reading and the second reading. So I highlighted, um, the Economic Development Corporation's final numbers, the Hunter's Crossing, uh, Public Improvement District final numbers, and there was a change in the Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Fund. We did hold a public hearing on, at the last meeting, and, um, this second reading will appropriate the sixty-one million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars in appropriations expenditures.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
Uh, this, I may, this may be more for the city manager. Is the, uh, your statement in here finished, city manager? It's not, it's not in here, is it? Yeah. And I noticed there were some things in here that were not filled out. Are you, y'all plan to fill those out after the fact, or?
On the performance measures, um, some of the information is not available because we don't have it. Um, so when it is published in its final form, if the information is available, the blanks will be filled out. If not, they will remain blank, and with time be filled in.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Waldron or the city manager?
I just had a question about the calendar that's being, that's in there. The calendar, so if I'm reading it right, after we pass the, we're looking to get, to get our hard copy in November, is that right?
That's what was agreed to last time, but we anticipate that you'll get it the second meeting in October, beating that deadline.
Okay. Thank you.
I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. She made the motion. Councilmember Rogers?
I can't really hear as well, Danny. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Um, so I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers, I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any discussion or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Let's have a round of applause. We have a budget for next year. Okay, counsel, you are on page one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven, because whoever should be deemed to make a motion has read the exact words. We are on nine H. Consider action to ratify the vote on the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget, which results in more revenues from ad valorem taxes than the previous year.
Yes, and this is required by state law. Anytime that occurs, that, that your budget will raise more tax, more revenue from ad valorem tax.
I move to ratify the vote just taken to approve the fis, the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget, which will raise more revenue from the ad valorem taxes than, than will previously in the previous fiscal year.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Peterson, a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. We're moving on to item nine I. You all, of course, are moving to page one thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty-nine of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting the tax rate and levying ad valorem taxes for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, to provide revenue for the payment of current expenditures, providing a severability clause establishing an effective date and proper notice and meeting. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, so counsel has complied with state law and has held the two public hearings for the proposed tax rate, which is point five six four. And, um, this is just the second reading to adopt that tax rate.
Councilmember Jackson?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point five six four oh, which is effectively a five point ninety percent increase in the tax rate.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson, a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Ordinance twenty nineteen dash thirty-nine is approved. We are moving on to item nine J. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty nineteen dash forty-two of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending Appendix A, the master fee schedule for the City of Bastrop, attached as Exhibit A, providing that other fees not listed but now charged pursuant to other ordinances and resolutions shall remain in effect until transferred to the master fee schedule by amendment, excluding Sections A thirteen dash oh two and A thirteen dash oh seven, providing for findings of fact, enactment, enforcement, or repealer and severability, establishing an effective date, and proper notice and meeting. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, so this is the second reading of an ordinance. There's been no changes to this ordinance since first reading.
But you guys will look and see if there's a breeder fee, and if we need to add that, you'll come back. Excellent. I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We have already taken care of nine K, so we're moving on to nine L. Consider action to approve resolution number R, sorry, I'm reading ahead. R twenty nineteen dash ninety-seven of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, to accept the Cultural Arts Master Plan as attached in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Chief Alguilme?
Yes, as we remember, last, uh, council meeting, we went over the Cultural Arts Master Plan, we had the discussion with it, it was presented and gave council time to review it, and we're just asking at this time that, after you had a chance to review it, to accept it, and to say that, uh, Lynn Osgood and Go Collaborative had met the requirements of the RFP.
So, chief, I want to, um, thank you for taking out the mayor's letter. Um, I saw that that was removed from the packet, and, uh, just clarify for the audience what, with the approval, it's accepting the document, and then this council, along with whatever boards and commissions, how we choose to implement that, is something that is owned by the, by the city?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Counsel?
Thank you, mayor. That was, uh, that was, uh, a question that B A I P P proposed, and I said we would be accepting it and then working on the implementation down the line. Thank you for clarifying.
Excellent. Councilmember Jackson, did you have a question? Would you turn on your mic?
I thought he was making a motion, so I was going to second it.
Okay, would you like to make the motion, or do you want? I move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Nelson. It's racing to the end. Uh, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, the resolution is approved and please, uh, Councilmember Brenner, if you would pass on our thanks to B A I P P, I would appreciate it.
Will do so.
All right, we're on nine M. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty nineteen dash forty-six of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop City Code of Ordinances, Chapter Three, Article three point oh one, General Provisions, Section three point oh one, point oh oh two, Bond and Insurance Requirements, and Providing for Findings of Fact, Enactment, Enforcement, or Repealer and Severability, Establishing an Effective Date, Proper Notice and Meeting. Madam Secretary, um, I noticed when I was reviewing through it, it, the ordinance says first reading September twenty-seventh, so we'll need to correct that to September twenty-fourth.
It is the first reading, not the second reading?
First reading, yeah.
Well, it says the first reading on the twenty-seventh and today's the twenty-fourth.
But in the agenda, it says approve the second reading and it is the first reading.
So we're, we're just, we, we've got some cleanup to do.
That's a little cleanup.
Thank you very much, first reading, thank you for clarifying.
Yes, this is a, this is a first reading, apologies for that. Uh, but this is a requirement in Section Three, or Chapter Three of the code in the building section. Um, and it's stated in the, in the staff report that you received, um, staff has no record that we've ever called the bond. Uh, we believe it's an antiquated requirement. Uh, we currently require the license, uh, or the liability insurance in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars, uh, which would cover, um, property damage and other, um, if that occurred, um, by, by a contractor. And so we feel that it's unnecessary to keep requiring, um, our, our contractors that do work in the city, uh, this additional step when we have the liability insurance to fall back on. So for that reason, staff is recommending to remove requirement A and, and go with requirement B being the first and then add no contractor and/or subcontractor, which would catch all the general contractors, uh, to supply the certificate of liability. With that, I can answer any questions.
So this is a little bit different than what was in the packet, because, uh, R A said removed and then there was a B.
Right, this is cleaned up, so you can't have a, a B without an A.
That's, and that was my question, like, how'd you just?
It's, it'll shift up, so B becomes A effectively, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I want to thank, uh, Mr. Jones and City Manager, both, this came about because, uh, one of our local businesses spoke with me at a chamber banquet, had some concerns. I passed them on to you guys, you met with them, and this seemed to be a really reasonable solution that helps both our businesses and our community to be protected but not be onerous as a governmental body. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
So bottom line, the city's interest for protecting is that the insurance department, no bond.
Yes, sir, that's required. We'll still require bond for public improvements, but for general contracting, uh, the, the liability insurance covers that.
Thank you so much.
I spoke with several contractors, uh, about this and, uh, they both said, good move. Applauded the city for considering.
It's really a good step in the right direction.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Um, I'm giving the second to Ennis. Councilmember Ennis makes the second. Uh, any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, motion passes unanimously for the first reading of ordinance twenty nineteen dash forty-six. Uh, we're moving on to item nine N, consider action to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash one oh one of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming a board appointment of the mayor is required in Section three point oh eight of the City's Charter, establishing an effective date. We had a person that chose not to sign up again for the, um, library board. You have in your, in our council shared folder, you saw an application from Sally Kiner. She has, um, functioned as a librarian before, she is extremely interested on being on the board and, um, in the interest of time, I will say that is my appointment that I'm respectfully asking for you guys to confirm.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson and a second from Councilmember Rogers, is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, I appreciate the, um, support, and I know that Sally's excited about being on the library. It is nine fifty-eight. Councilmember Peterson? I have one question before you adjourn. And, I don't know if this is the right time to ask a question, but it, I had a question when he came up with the ordinance and was talking about selling the puppies at Walmart and he would need a, a permit. Does that mean all the people that like go out there and sell all the, the stuff on Walmart sidewalk? You know, you come out of Walmart and they're selling you a cross or they sell you something else? Are they required to get a permit or because they're on Walmart's property, is that Walmart's problem?
We're going to check with, with the city prosecutor and see what their feelings are on that, because I've seen it go both ways. Where if you have permission from the property owner, then you're, you're working under their Aegis. And if not, then, then you may need to have a vendor. So we'll see which way the city attorney, uh, city prosecutor interprets that and we can report back to you. And if you like that as a policy, we'll consider.
That's correct, somebody might be watching and if the Girl Scouts are selling, they might need.
That, that was going to be my point, Chief. Make sure you remind her it's Girl Scout cookies. We don't need to be in the news about keeping Girl Scouts from selling cookies at the Walmart.
I will tell you that we also went and bought lemonade and didn't request the twenty-year-olds to have a, have a vendor's permit for that either. So common sense does need to, does need to prevail, yes.
All right, it's nine fifty-nine, Councilmember Peterson?
Motion to adjourn.
Nine fifty-nine and we are adjourned, thank you very much.